Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to begin. The October 23rd, 2008 Planning Commission meeting has been called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. I'd like to introduce to everybody a new Planning Commissioner this evening. Commissioner Keen Ellsworth will be representing Ward 6, and that is the Councilman Steve Ross's Ward. So we'd like to welcome him to the family this evening.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I look forward to the opportunity to serve with you all simultaneously.
Thank you. And I, being an Eagle Scout and also myself as Vice President of Scout Reach for the Boy Scouts of America, I'm going to ask Commissioner Ellsworth to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pleading) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
After the meeting, we'll see how many push-ups he can do. So, roll call, please.
Chair Goines.
Present.
Vice Chair Trowbridge.
Present.
Commissioner Truesdale.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Commissioner Steinem.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Ellsworth.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call to your attention the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 25th, 2008 Planning Commission meeting.
So moved.
Motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. I think we showed in abeyance.
That would be an extension for Mr.
Is that an extension for Commissioner Keen?
Yes, I wasn't here, so I was told I needed to.
That is proper and noted. Any items from the Planning Commission or staff or the applicant that wish to be stricken or are held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Items 13, 14, 15, and 16 have been requested to be held in abeyance to the November 6th Planning Commission meeting. Items 21 and 22, the applicant has requested that these items be withdrawn without prejudice. Item 25, 26, 27, and, excuse me, item number 25 has been requested to be held in abeyance till November 6th. Items number 26, 27, 28, and 29 have been requested to be held to the November 20th Planning Commission meeting. Item 30 has been requested to be withdrawn without prejudice, and items number 31 and 32 have been requested to be held in abeyance to the November 20th Planning Commission meeting.
Excuse me, can you go through the numbers once again real quick? I got some of the twenties mixed up.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, number 21 and 22 are requested to be held without, withdrawn without prejudice. 25, item number 25 has been requested to be held in abeyance till November 6th. Items 26, 27, 28, and 29 have been requested to be held in abeyance till November 20th. Item number 30, the applicant has requested that the application be withdrawn without prejudice, and items number 31 and 32 have been requested to be held in abeyance to the November 20th Planning Commission meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any Commissioners wish to have any items pulled? Seeing none, I entertain a motion on the abeyance withdrawal request items read by staff.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as modified by staff's request.
Motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed. We'll move on no consent items this evening. We'll move on to our one motion, one vote. The following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearing and non-public hearing will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Okay? Our one motion, one vote items, I'll read them into the record. We'll begin with items, these will be items 6 through 12. Item 6 is RQR 29528, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor Owner Mini Masters, Inc., required five-year review on an approved special use permit for a 40-foot tall, 14-by-40-foot off-premise sign billboard located at the southern half of the subject site at 6900 West Craig Road. Item 7, RQR 29609, applicant owner Wall Street, Nevada, HS LLC, required two-year review of an approved special use permit for an 80-foot tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign billboard at 1197 Western Avenue. Item 8, RQR 29711, applicant owner TJP Nevada Limited Partnership, required two-year review of an approved special use permit for a 40-foot tall, 14-by-48-foot off-premise sign billboard at 2101 South Decatur Boulevard. Item 9, RQR 29719, applicant owner Lilian Hill Living Trust, required six-month review of an approved special use permit for a 75-foot tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign billboard at 2421 Stewart Avenue. Item 10, SUP 29844, applicant Zia Record Exchange, owner Sahara Westlake Associates, for an approved second-hand dealer at 4503 West Sahara Avenue. Item 11, SUP 29869, applicant Bylow Market 4, owner Edmund Town Center LLC, for a proposed retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor off sale and waivers to allow a 300-foot distance separation where 400 feet is required for a church and to allow a 150-foot distance separation from a city park where 400 feet is required at 1061 West Owens. Item 12, SUP 30324, applicant owner Nevada Power, for a proposed 108-foot radio communication tower at the northeast corner of Cheyenne Avenue and Durango Drive.
Mr. Chairman, item number 8, the staff has not received confirmation from the applicant that they agree to the conditions, therefore, we're requesting that it be pulled from one motion, one vote. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on item 6 inasmuch as property is owned by a business partner.
Okay.
Good evening, Rod Carter, 288 Meade Avenue. On behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor, we faxed the consent in and are, have no problem with any of the conditions and would appreciate the continued support.
Is that a number 8?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and include that in, okay? Make a motion on the one motion, one vote items as read into record by.
Make a motion for approval for items 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12 as presented subject to staff recommendations.
Motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
And that is with Commissioner Truesdale abstaining on item 6, and all matters go forward to the City Council on November 19th.
At this time, we'll pull, I'm going to pull items 48 and 49 forward. And these are public hearing items. So at this time, I'll go ahead and read them into the record. Item 48, MSH 29429, applicant owner City of Las Vegas, request to amend the master plan of streets and highways to widen the Las Vegas Boulevard between Fourth Street and Sahara Avenue from a 100-foot right-of-way to a 120-foot right-of-way. Item 49, MSH 29859, applicant owner City of Las Vegas, request to amend the master plan of streets and highways for a proposed 82-foot wide collector to serve as an east and west connection between Veterans Memorial Parkway and Maryland Parkway north of Harris Avenue and at Veterans Memorial Drive as an 80-foot collector between Bonanza Road and the proposed new collector street. Staff? Applicat-
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. It's been a while since I've done this. My name is Sherri Edelman. I'm the Acting City Engineer and Deputy Director of the Department of Public Works here at the City of Las Vegas. I have with me here tonight Catherine Lefeta, who's a Principal Planner with Lewis Berger Group, and she has been involved with the project since its early pre-planning stages. So she's going to go ahead and let you know about the projects.
Mr. Chairman, before we proceed, I'm going to abstain on item 48 inasmuch as I own property that is significantly affected by this action, so I will not be voting.
Thank you.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Catherine Lefeta. I'm from the Lewis Berger Group. The address of the Lewis Berger Group is 500 East Amigo Court, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89119. Let me give you a little bit of background. The City of Las Vegas is proposing the master plan of streets and highways to be amended to show Las Vegas Boulevard between Sahara Avenue and Fourth Street as a 120-foot right-of-way corridor. The section of Las Vegas Boulevard is currently master-planned as a 100-foot right-of-way corridor. The requested 120-foot corridor was developed from a study conducted by the RTC to enhance transit service along Las Vegas Boulevard. The RTC is planning to run a rapid transit system from the South Strip Transfer Terminal to downtown Las Vegas. This system would be part of a regional system that would provide transit service between McCarran Airport and a future UNLV campus north of the Northern Beltway. The RTC's study identifies a route that would tie into the Downtown Connector currently The RTC's study proposed dedicated transit lanes in the City of Las Vegas section of the Las Vegas Boulevard corridor, allowing the buses to run outside of the general purpose lanes, which are projected to be heavily congested. In addition, Clark County has master-planned its section of Las Vegas Boulevard as a 200-foot right-of-way corridor since 2003. The 200-foot right-of-way accommodates eight travel lanes. A 120-foot corridor in the city will also be able to accommodate eight lanes, two of which can and are hopefully going to be used as transit lanes. The exhibit shown here is a 120-foot right-of-way corridor that would include six general purpose lanes and two transit and right-turn lanes. The 10-foot pedestrian easement shown on each side of the 120-foot right-of-way is a separate issue, not part of this action, and that request for those would come before you when the Downtown Centennial Plan is updated. The requested amendment to the master plan of streets and highways will allow the city to obtain additional right-of-way for Las Vegas Boulevard when adjacent properties redevelop. Plans to redevelop and extend the resort corridor north of Sahara Avenue are already in progress. If the city wants to extend the strip and resort area further north, then we need to make sure the roadway right-of-way and infrastructure are in place. As part of the RTC study, a public information meeting was held on May 29th, 2008, and stakeholder coordination has continued from inception of the study. The City of Las Vegas Department of Public Works also held a public information meeting on September 22nd, 2008 at City Hall. There were six people in attendance. Since then, we have received several letters of support for this project. City of Las Vegas staff respectfully requests your support of this action. We will now take any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, would you like us also to give the report to, on the next phase as well? I believe you opened both items at the same time.
Yes, you may as well.
Okay.
Give us the big picture.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead and do the next phase. Okay, shall we do the north one? Yes.
For those in the audience, he's now going to speak on item 49.
The amendment to the master plan of streets and highways will add a new connector road, Cultural Vista Parkway, between Veterans Memorial Drive and Maryland Parkway, and also make Veterans Memorial Drive an 800-foot collector between Bonanza Road and Cultural Vista Parkway. I don't know if it's obvious here, but outlined in the yellow is that new road that we are talking about. The project was identified through a planning charrette that took place on August 29th, 2007. The purpose of the charrette was to develop a vision for Las Vegas Boulevard North, to identify ways to accommodate projected travel growth, and to identify a proposed route for future bus rapid transit service. The RTC has envisioned a regional transit system that would provide enhanced continuous transit service between McCarran Airport and the future UNLV campus north of the Northern Beltway. The Downtown Connector is currently under construction. In addition, the City of North Las Vegas will soon let out a contract for the North Fish Street Improvement Project, which will include bus rapid transit, also called BRT, north of Owens Avenue. The transit component of this project allows a transit connection between the downtown north section of the City of Las Vegas into the City of North Las Vegas. The west leg of Cultural Vista Parkway provides the link between transit service from the future Downtown Transit Center and Las Vegas Boulevard North to Owens Avenue. The BRT would run in dedicated lanes on Veterans Memorial Drive to Cultural Vista Parkway and then into mixed-use lanes on Las Vegas Boulevard. As this cross-section shows, Veterans Memorial Drive would be an 80-foot right-of-way corridor, including transit lanes and two general purpose lanes. The new Cultural Vista Parkway was also developed as a means to allow traffic to split off of Las Vegas Boulevard to Maryland Parkway. With the aforementioned North Fish Street Improvement Project, North Fish Street will carry six lanes of general purpose traffic and two transit lanes. The projected travel, traffic volumes along Las Vegas Boulevard are expected to more than triple. The cross-section of Cultural Vista Parkway shows an 82-foot right-of-way corridor with four lanes of traffic and a 14-foot median and turning lane. Cultural Vista Parkway would also include bike lanes on each side. Most of the right-of-way acquisitions will be done on publicly-owned land, that is Reed Whipple and Cashman Field. Few private acquisitions would be required. There are no immediate plans for construction of this project. This is purely in the planning stage. A public hearing was held on August 12th, 2008. About 20 people attended this meeting. We have received letters of support of this project. City of Las Vegas staff respectfully requests your support of this action.
Thank you very much. Before I open the public hearing, I'm going to abstain on this, excuse me, I'll be abstaining on this item and turning it over to my Vice Chairman. Full disclosure, I work for Veolia Transportation, which is the operators of the RTC transit system. Why my direct report as the Senior Customer Service Supervisor is not to the RTC, I don't want to create any perception that this is going to benefit my company. So with that, I'll go ahead and abstain on this item and turn it over to Vice Chairman Trowbridge. Thank you.
Thank you. You've concluded your presentation.
Yes.
I'd like to declare the public hearing open now. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter, please come forward to the microphone and state your name for the record, and there are several coming up, so I'll alert you that there's two microphones. Please avail yourself of either that's closest to you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman and Commissioner. On item number 48, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Item number 48, do they have to condemn land for that project? And if so, are the landowners going willingly, or are they going down kicking and screaming?
We're going to find out.
Vice Chair, real quick, I said, I'm glad we had that question asked first off, because maybe I'd, make it, help the Commission make a disclosure to the public and those listening on TV. This is a, this is a request to amend the master plan of streets and highways. This is not a governmental notice of any intent to acquire or condemn any property along this corridor. This is merely a planning tool by the City of Las Vegas in order to allow the public to understand what the future may hold. Again, there is no planned acquisition or condemnation of land that will or could come from this action at any time in the near future.
Thank you.
Rebecca Kenny from Brownstein Hyatt Farber Shrek, 100 City Parkway, Suite 1600. And I'm here on behalf of St. Louis Square and Stratosphere LLC, and we would just like to put our objection on record that we have some concerns regarding the future dedication and the possible lack of compensation or just compensation for the taking of the land if it needs to be dedicated during redevelopment. I have letters that we would like to put into the record at this time.
Thank you. If you just give copies to the clerks, you'll see that they go on record and will become part of the permanent file.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Robin Brooks. We own the property at 1600 and 1616 Las Vegas Boulevard, a property that's been in our family for 50 years. If you take 10-foot off my property, you will basically put us out of business. We are very close as it is, and that allows for parking. Without parking, I cannot run a shopping center. I would like to go on record opposing it.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Stephen Fink. I live in the Allure High-Rise Condos at 200 West Sahara, Unit 3402. I'm also a part-owner of the vacant land next door to Allure, whereas you might all remember, we do have entitlements to build a hotel casino there, which of course is, you know, on hold, as is everything else in the world, it seems today. I'm here to support the master plan amendment on 48. I'm not here speaking on 49. And I understand what the last lady just said about the issues with her business, and those have to be addressed. Her claim was she has very little land there, and that that needs to be addressed, of course. If in the future there was a development project in this area, as was previously stated, I would imagine the city is seeking to attract world-class resort development, in particular very close to Sahara as we're moving north to the Stratosphere and beyond. And the only way, from my perspective and the experience I've had in that area for the last four years while we developed Allure, is that to foster the best resort development, world-class resort development in the future in that area, we need to have the most efficient transportation system possible and the most efficient overall infrastructure possible in that area in order to attract that kind of development. If we continue to go on with the right-of-way that we have today, and as future development comes, no additional lanes are available to put traffic through at a faster pace, we won't attract that world-class development that I believe is what the city truly wants to bring to that southern gateway to the city. And I believe you should approve this amendment.
Thank you. Sir?
Yeah, Al Gallegos, sir, from Las Vegas. Well, I had to come 300 miles to come to this meeting, and now it's telling me that I don't know if it's going to be built or not. The, over in the, in the area here, right about where my finger is, is my home, my home, where I have lived for many, many, many years. And you're driving me out slowly and slowly. What I want to know is, what is this road? It's not being built for the RTC, this road going through the, through Whipple Center. It's being built for Cashman Center. Tell us the truth. It's being built for Cashman Center. When there's traffic coming out of Cashman Center, there's no way for the traffic that comes into on Las Vegas Boulevard to Bonanza, and it backs up. I mean, it backs up. So that's why they're building this road here, so people will come over to Veterans Memorial and then come on, get back on the freeway in that direction. Another thing, too, Bonanza Way, right in here, is there a road coming into Bonanza Way? Nobody will tell me that. This, this project is a very secretive project. Sir, no, no hideouts over here. Okay? Tell us the truth. What is Bonanza Way going to be a truth, a road going into Veterans Memorial?
We've, we've got the engineers on the project here, and we'll get you an answer to your question.
Okay, I want to know that, because I'm looking at the little yellow lines that doesn't tell me anything. And if they ever built this project here on Bonanza, on Whipple Center, I want a wall from Veterans Memorial to Las Vegas Boulevard, 12 or to 15 feet high, because I don't want to smell Mr. Goines' buses and so forth, day and night. And that's the road's supposed to be a 24-hour road. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Bob Rave, 2001, South Paradise. I have a question probably for the city attorney. I understand this is merely a planning tool. You just mentioned it is merely a planning tool. I'm wondering what triggers, what triggers a redevelopment? At what point does somebody have to deed off this right-of-way? Is it when I actually have to pull a building permit to replace a water heater or make some minor addition to my property? I'm curious, what is the, what is the trigger that causes you to lose the property? Thank you.
Just, we'll give him a second to think, and we'll ask the, anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on items either 48 or 49? The public hearing is open for both of them. Okay, seeing no more questions, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to staff to field those questions that were rendered, either, you know, Marra Gokhan or perhaps Jim? Jim, you want to take the?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'm not going to, not going to bore you with a course on condemnation in eminent domain tonight, but what I will say is that at some point in the future, the city might decide that it needs to widen Las Vegas Boulevard. I'm talking, let's just use 48 as an example. At that point, the city will discuss this acquisition with the landowners. But right now, I don't want, I don't want this conversation to be focused on what could happen in the future, maybe, because we don't know. We don't know what's going to happen in the future. This is a planning tool cities around the country use to let the public and landowners know what we might have to do sometime in the future. I would be more than happy to talk to the applicant after the Planning Commission or on the phone if he chose to call me during the week, but I'm not sure right now is the appropriate time to give you all a lecture on, on the current issues in eminent domain.
Thank you. Engineers?
Yes, thank you very much. Again, I just wanted to mention that, she mentioned a little bit in the, in the report about, you know, that we anticipate that these would happen as development occurs and that sort of thing, and I just wanted to let you know that we have seen some assemblages along Las Vegas Boulevard on the north side of Sahara already. And so again, this is a planning document. We just want to make sure that, you know, it, our intent is clear that we do want this road widened for the purposes of the BRT. Also along with that, I just wanted to remind you again that the county's right-of-way to the south of Sahara is 200-foot, and if we do, just as the gentleman said, expect a world-class development, we believe that we have to widen our street to be able to accommodate the amount of traffic that would be down there as well as the transit ability. So that's to answer the questions on the south. And then the questions on the north end, from Mr. Gallegos, essentially, I don't know of any plans or anything for a road specifically for Cashman Center. Again, this is for the BRT to bring that bus rapid transit traffic down to the Maryland Parkway area where the route is going to be. Again, on Bonanza Way, I'll let, I'll let the engineer address that. And then as far as a wall, we typically do not put walls, sound walls on residential streets. Those are typically just for freeways, facilities, so. And again, we don't have any plans right now for any kind of road construction, so again, we would address those things. Again, they would be, they would be reheard. We would have more public meetings in the future to address any specific concerns with the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'd like to turn the matter over to the Planning Commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to know, on the one on Las Vegas Boulevard, if this is approved here and then by council, the question was asked, a very good one, if I decide to develop my property next year along there, are you taking the 10 feet at that time as part of the permitting process to redevelop my property? Or are we going to wait until the day comes when the city says we have to go through this project, and then it does get into the condemnation and the taking of this? Or are we going to piecemeal it through, over a period of years? Or are we going to do it in one swoop later on when it's needed?
Our plan is, as redevelopment occurs, that we would get the right-of-way that is needed. But when we don't have any immediate plans, this could be a project that's 20 years out, we don't have any immediate plans to do anything on this road. Again, it's something that we believe that the city needs to have for future growth to bring that development down. But you are correct in that there would be an exaction that would be required if someone came in for a redevelopment plan of their property.
And if I may, Public Works, Bart Anderson.
And if I may, Public Works, Bart Anderson, if I may also follow on that. It's difficult to say exactly what possible future redevelopment plan might trigger it. There are a number of possibilities, the number of possible redevelopment plans that would not trigger that, and then there are those that might. If you were proposing to assemble large properties together, knock down all of the buildings on them, that would be possibly a type of redevelopment where we could do that exaction. But there are a whole host of other types of redevelopment, including the building permit for the water heater, where we would not have that ability. So I can't, at this point, give you a definitive answer that yes, we would, or no, we would not. There are possibilities that could arise, but we'd have to determine that when those possibilities arise.
Over the last three or four years, we have approved some projects in this general area, and they, some of them haven't taken place because of circumstances, financing, whatever. If those entitlements still exist and they go ahead with them, how do you get to 10 feet off of those properties when we've already entitled them to do a certain thing? What happens then?
Again, I guess we're dealing with a hypothetical that it's difficult for me to respond. It depends. If they have existing entitlements, which means existing approved plans that they could build today without any further action by this body or the city council, then most likely they could go forward with those plans, and we would have to consider some other mechanisms. But it's difficult to respond broadly because it is different for each case.
I have trouble understanding how you can piecemeal a project of this magnitude that you say is so necessary to continue the path of transportation off the strip to the south that's going to be 200, it's going to go down to 120. If the 200 occurs and we don't do the 120, we're creating a bottleneck. Obviously, it's not going to be a pretty scene. Why do we piecemeal? And do we know the county's going ahead with theirs in entirety at this time? What's the status of their project? We're creating a problem here, I think. I'm not against what you want to do at all. I think it's right. But to create it and get it, I don't know how you pull this off. First of all, do you know whether the county is going ahead with their 200 feet? It is a done deal? It's going to happen everywhere, all the way up and down the strip, south of?
If I may, on that one, the master plan of streets and highways for Clark County already shows it as a 200-foot right-of-way. The right-of-way doesn't exist everywhere, but the master plan shows it as that. So they most likely will, as redevelopment occurs, obtain that right-of-way. For us, all I can say is that this is no different than any other master plan of streets and highways amendment that we have adopted. We generally wait for adjacent development to come in before we impose any kind of requirement.
That's why, Mr. Chairman, I think this, and if that's the way we're going to do it, it appears to be, this could be a 30-year project. I mean, that's what it ends up being.
Vice Chair, may I ask?
Go ahead.
With all due respect, Commissioner, that's what the master plan is for, though. It's to enable the public and landowners to understand what this city, this commission and the council believe may happen in a long range, yeah, in a long-range period, from now, 20 years from now. We do our master plans, for example, our land use master plans, we try to update every five years or so, but they're really 20-year master plans. It's so people have an idea of what this city is going to be doing for the next 20 years. Does that mean we're going to do everything that we have on our land use master plan, on our transportation master plan? The answer is no. But we have an obligation statutorily, and we have an obligation to our constituents to let them know what it is we think the city needs to do to provide the improvements necessary. And that's what the plans are for.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Mr. Stevens, go ahead.
Thank you. I understand this is a planning tool, and I too respect the vision. My question is, at some point in the future, a number of years, say, from now, five years, 10 years, two, three, whenever, if there is a determination made to widen the street, would it then be said that, say, a property owner who needs to dedicate a portion of their land, could it then be said that, well, the city approved that in 2008 in a public hearing, and therefore you have a diminished ability to negotiate? Can anyone answer that? I guess I'm casting a vote today, I think, on what I see as a vision, but I'm wondering what the long-term consequences could be if, say, I were a property owner along Las Vegas Boulevard, and I had a business. Is it conceivable that my business could be impacted and in a negative way as a result of this action today, even though the actual action wouldn't occur until a number of years from now?
Mr. Vice Chair, I might want to answer this. Maybe I can address your issue this way. There may be valuations that landowners perceive, you know, whether a master plan amendment increases or decreases the value of one's property, but then there's what the courts perceive. And the courts have been clear on master plan amendments and the adoption of master plans. They do not affect a taking of property under the Fifth Amendment. These are planning tools. Courts are clear. I'm going to read something from one of our legal encyclopedias. It's called American Jurisprudence. And what it does is it pulls the general state of the law, and it calls it from cases from around the country. This is a quote, "The adoption of a general plan for the future development of an area indicating potential public use of privately-owned land does not amount to inverse condemnation of that land. Such activities by government officials are no more than planning and do not affect the owner's interest." So there is, I'm sure, a perception of the value of this master plan amendment to the landowner, but then there is what the courts have held. And so I guess my point is, you could have conversations with these landowners to find out what they believe. But the state of the law is, master plan amendments are not a taking, they are not considered a taking, this is not eminent domain, this is a planning tool and a planning tool.
So this, in effect, is really just a wish. It's nothing more than that. There's no concrete action resulting from this, other than it's our vision and our wish.
Yes, Mr. Commissioner, that's correct. Could the city decide at some point in the future that, in fact, we want to go from 100 feet to 120 feet along Las Vegas Boulevard, using 48 as an example? The answer is yes. Today, all we have is a master plan amendment that says that's something we might want to do, and we have an obligation to tell our constituency and the public what we plan to do or would like to do in the future.
And perhaps just ask the--
Yeah, can we readdress?
No, ma'am.
Excuse me. I just want to say for the record that I agree with the vision and the growth and the long-term thought of something like this, but I do not in any way agree with shutting down someone's shopping center or taking away someone's land that has prospered their families or their homes and their lives. And even though I will support a vision, I want to be on record as saying that I do not support changing the lives of people that have been there for 50 years, and it's, I hope that my vote doesn't impact their lives later.
Thank you. And to ask the same question, perhaps in another way, is that the value of the property that may be subject to taking at some unknown time in the future, the value of that property would be established at that particular point in time?
Vice Chairman, thank you. Again, you know, I don't want to take my comments taken out of context, but in the future, if the city were to actually begin acquisition of land, we have a constitutional obligation to pay just compensation. Period.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion? Then I think we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion for it. On the agenda item number 48, MSH 29429, I'll move for approval, subject to the agenda conditions. I didn't notice.
Motion's being made. Please cast your votes. Motion carries in regards to item number 49?
Number 49 is MSH 29859. I'll move for approval, subject condition.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote.
Both items have Commissioners Truesdale and Chairman Boyne abstaining, and both matters go forward to the city council on November 19.
Thank you.
Next item up will be item number 33.
Will be item number 33?
I'd like to pull item 33 forward, and then we'll go back to our regular public hearing agenda. Item 33, GPA 29886, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, request to amend the Downtown North Land Use Plan. Staff?
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, because this item contains elements related to item number 49 on the agenda, we requested to pull this item forward so those members of the public could also speak on this one as well. Item number 33 is an update of the Downtown North Land Use Plan. The Downtown North Plan was originally adopted in 2003, and because we attempt to update our plans about every five years, it was time that this one came due for some revisions and updates. The majority of the updates that we're making reflect physical changes that have occurred in the Downtown North area since the document was last rebought. However, there are a number of changes that are relatively significant that I'd like to discuss with you this evening. If I could go on to the next slide, please. First of all, the boundaries of the Downtown North area, we're proposing to extend those all the way to Maryland Parkway. There were two areas that were not included. Those are shown in the hatched area on the map, as you can see there in the visual. And we are proposing to include those in the boundaries of the Downtown North Land Use Plan, primarily residential in nature. Moving to the next slide, please. In terms of land use changes, we've updated the Downtown North Plan to reflect changes that have been made since the document was originally adopted. Those land use changes include the recent general plan amendment that was made by Anderson Derry and other such changes. Also, one of the things that we've included is because NDOT has proposed to widen I-15, there's a possibility that we might lose our recreational facilities that are immediately adjacent there to the north, the Dula Gym, the Senior Center, and the municipal pool. Because of that proposed change, what we have done is identified a potential site on Bonanza to relocate those facilities if that change were to go forward. Again, it's important for us to retain those recreational facilities within the neighborhood available to residents, and so we wanted to put that forward as part of our forward planning for the neighborhood, should that change be made. Next slide, please. In terms of transportation, as you are aware, with item number 49 on the agenda, the master plan of streets and highways is proposed to be amended to include an east-west connector from Veterans Memorial to Maryland Parkway. We would also show that here in the Downtown North Land Use Plan if that is approved by city council to go forward. Also, in terms of changes to the transportation in the area, we're indicating that Las Vegas Boulevard would be expanded to 100 feet, as indicated in item number 49. And then also talking about some improvements that are proposed to Las Vegas Boulevard, including new landscaping and then a pedestrian bridge that has been proposed to cross over from the cultural facilities on the west side to the east side. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take your questions at this point in time.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience you'd like to speak for, gets this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from commissioners? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on item 33.
Make a motion on item number 33, GPA 29886, move for approval.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 33. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
That goes forward to council on November 19.
Just a point of clarification for the record. During the one-motion-one-vote items, we approved item 11, SUP 29869, applicant by low market, four. Just wanted to put on the record that that item will go on to city council on November the 5th. Thank you. Back to our public hearing items, items 17 through 20 are related items. Item 17 is VAR 29443, applicant owner, ETC Holdings LLC, to allow 136 parking spaces where 158 are required, and to allow one loading zone where two are required on 2.62 acres at 1208 East Charleston Boulevard. Item 18, VAR 29494, to allow a 15-foot setback where 20 feet is required, and to allow a zero-foot corner side building setback where 15 feet is required. Item 19, SDR 29440, for a proposed 39,420-square-foot commercial development, which includes 14,320 square feet of new construction with waivers of perimeter landscape buffer requirements to allow a 10-foot buffer along the north property line where 15 feet is required, to allow a 5-foot buffer along the west property line where 15 feet is required, to allow a 3-foot buffer along the east property line where 8 feet is required, and to allow a waiver of the building placement standards. Item 20, RQR 29809, oh, pardon me. We'll stop at item 19. Thank you. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, these items were held in advance in order for the applicant to address concerns regarding the cell tower on-site. And regarding the variances, staff finds that they are self-import hardship and is recommending denial. And as such, the site plan is dependent upon those variances and is also recommending denial.
Thank you. Applicant?
Eli Mizrahi. I'm the owner and applicant of the Huntridge Theater. We're trying to do this project here, and we're trying to save the Huntridge, and it's keep it intact the way it is. We've been here before, and we're asking for you guys to approve it the way it sits.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody you'd like to speak for, gets this item? Please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 18th Street, and I concur with staff. He wants to do it the way it sits, and there's too many problems with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farlow?
Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Brian Paco Alvarez. I live at 801 Las Vegas Boulevard South. I represent the Huntridge Theater, the group, Save the Huntridge Group, and we are all ask you to pass this motion as is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mary Joy Alderman, and as you recall, I spoke last month, so I just want to reiterate that I'm a lifetime Las Vegas resident, living almost my entire life within blocks of the Huntridge Theater. I commend Mr. Mizrahi for the plans he's presented to our neighborhood group, and I hope that the commission will approve his requests so that he can move forward and bring life back to this very important and historical section of our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Pam Hartley, 1700 Rexford, and I am also a member of the Save the Huntridge Group, and I would like to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the commissioners? Vice Chairman Frobridge?
Yes, if I could, I too would like to see the Huntridge saved in its current configuration. I have no objection at all to its changing its use. I also have no objection with building C, and I can probably even live with the cell tower antenna and maybe even the--
tower antenna and maybe even the billboard that's sitting there. What bothers me is the request for the waivers for the north end of the property along Charleston, as well as the east side, particularly up there where those waivers are required so that you can accommodate bringing in a restaurant with exterior service lanes. You know, the, having a fast food restaurant with drive-throughs in front of the Huntridge Theater, I think ruins the benefit of the rest of the project. And I would oppose any of the waivers that are necessary to accommodate the placement of a fast food restaurant with drive-throughs. It just blocks the view of the entire facility, and therefore totally negates all the good that you're doing. So you get bonus points for trying to save the Huntridge, but you lose them all. Take them all away because you're putting in a fast food restaurant in front of it and nobody will see it.
Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, thank you. We were here last month, and we had lengthy discussions, and if I recall correctly, I believe the first two items, the variances, were approved, and we stumbled on the site development review. And one of the major contentions was the cell tower. And, you know, in reflection on this, I think there are ways that we may be able to get to some aspect of approving this so that, you know, I think the goal for many people, many of us, is the preservation of the structure itself, which everybody seems to agree has great historic significance, and also to revitalize that area, which, you know, is just a tremendous opportunity waiting to happen. So, you know, I, we had a spirited discussion, and my hope is that we can find a way to move this forward. When we left the meeting the last week, we had to end up rescinding the votes so that the matter could come forward again. The cell tower site, I don't think anybody's thrilled about its presence there now, but there was discussion about making it a stealth tower, and I think that would be an excellent idea. But my thought is, why not do that when the construction begins for this? Allow it to remain there until such time as building permits are pulled and construction begins. I think my big issue is that until that time, I want to ensure that the property is protected, and that it isn't a haven for vandals. And to that end, the thought that came to my mind that I thought was a very practical and fairly inexpensive consideration was to have some kind of motion lights on the building itself and maybe on the perimeter, as well as lighting in the evening. I go by every day, and I really can appreciate, you know, the fact that you've got a lot of, you know, you put a lot of time in there, and I've seen work crews there almost every day, either painting or fixing, and, you know, you have the taggers and the graffiti, and it seems to me that you've attempted, you know, to battle that. We talked about temporary fencing, the structure itself, and I don't think that the entire site necessarily needs to be fenced, but I do think it would be important and relatively inexpensive to provide some kind of temporary fencing around the perimeter of the building so that, you know, you don't end up with vagrants in there and ultimately, you know, there become vandal and destruction and, God forbid, a fire. So I think that's something that could be achieved with a relatively minor amount of outlay. And then the other things are, we talked about the billboard, one of the conditions of approval in the last iteration was the removal of the billboard, and it's, again, my opinion, I know it's the, I believe the next item on our agenda, but I always feel like the revenue from the billboards in sites like this, as long as they're well-maintained, can help a property owner maintain the property, provide security, you know, insurance, maintenance, et cetera. So, and I don't find that billboard particularly offensive, I see where there's a new face on it, they've put some new copy. So that was, but I think everybody agrees that whatever occurs on the site, that it just be protected. And my thought was that to be lit, you know, be downlit so that it doesn't spill into the neighbors to the south of there, and that perhaps there'd be some sort of motion lights on the building. The drive-through, I too was not crazy about, but it's not a deal killer for me, I don't know how the rest of the Commission feels about that. I do have issues with the public safety, of public safety concerns about the ingress and egress on the south end of the property, where you come around the corner from the park, I believe that's identified as an entryway or an exit. And we talked at the last meeting about providing some kind of signage, you know, warning hidden drive or something, maybe some kind of traffic calming or slowing, a flashing light, something to keep that, maybe it could be an entrance only, I would defer maybe to Public Works or to the rest of the Commission to see if we can't find some agreeable solution to that. And I had to thank the folks that have worked so diligently with Eli in trying to keep this alive. I mean, it's their passion, I think, that brought this forward, and, you know, in a perfect world, I'd love to see the Huntridge continue to have operated as an entertainment venue. But in talking with Brian Alvarez and Mary Joy and the rest of the Vintage Vegas crew, I think they could be of great assistance. I think, Paco, you mentioned something about having found, I believe, photos for the lobby. I'd like to see a nod to the great history of the Huntridge Theater. And to that end, at the last meeting, we had discussed maybe using the marquee, or maybe even expanding on the marquee, to allow signage for the various tenants in the building. I had thought of chasing lights and, you know, all sorts of different things that would help identify what businesses are there, and the historic photos and things like that from the lobby, I think would go a long way to giving a sense of place, of purpose, and of history. So I know there are details that need to be worked out, and I'd be curious about my fellow Commissioners, but I really would like to see some aspect of approval in that I think it's important that this site remain, you know, and it's just such an incredible opportunity for that part of the city, which I'm so passionate about. So I'm curious about my fellow Commissioners and how we can maybe get to some sense of approval on this. Thank you.
Chairman, go ahead.
Commissioner, comment?
May I speak?
Sure, go ahead.
Several things, I actually contacted my architect today, and the cell tower, albeit absolutely ugly, and I agree with you one hundred percent, they have a thirty-two-year lease there, and it would be very costly to move. I asked him maybe if we can do some sort of architectural feature around it, maybe, to hide it completely without doing anything structurally to the Huntridge and ruining that. That maybe would help just alleviate that whole cell tower issue. As far as the drives, I mean, we talked before, it would be amendable to putting some sort of sign towards Huntridge Park. These drives are all existing, they haven't changed at all, we aren't changing them. They've been in use for thirty years, or however long it's been. I don't know traffic counts, I don't know if anybody's been in an accident or not, but, I mean, we haven't, knock on wood, had any problems with it. As far as the fence, my past experience with fences is it keeps homeless in more than out. I do go by there frequently to make sure that the place is open or closed and secure. But, you know, if a fence is that big of a deal, then maybe I will consider it, but I honestly think it does more detriment than it does good. It doesn't help us get into it to secure it. If we do it around the perimeter, it completely keeps out police or any sort of activity that we do, because every time I drive by there, I go in the back, I take a look at it, I go in the front, I do a complete loop around the building. So, I mean, a fence would inhibit that and make it real difficult to do.
I'm not thinking about, excuse me, the entire site itself, the two-point-some-odd acres. My thought was about the historic structure itself, so that, say, twenty feet from the building, there's some kind of fencing which keeps people out. And my concern is that with the power out or whatever, there's no lighting there. And when I go by at night, sometimes I'm thinking that this would be a swell place to, you know, for someone to kind of hide in one of the little nooks and
That's why we should get this approved fast.
Anything we can do to keep that from occurring, I think, would be a good thing if we did do the
Well, before we get into that, we still got the public hearing, because if I let you guys go back and forth, you'll be here all night.
Okay, but, okay.
I want to give other Commissioners an opportunity to get their comments on the record, and we will allow you some time at the end of the testimony to
It's my first time.
Answer some of those questions, so please indulge us a little bit.
All right.
Commissioner Quinn, any comments, or Commissioner Steinman? Commissioner Quinn?
I didn't realize that the cell tower comment that I made was going to tailspin your project, but maybe there was a reason for it. I hope that it is so that we find better ways to make this project move forward tonight. And I do agree with my fellow Commissioner, who is so passionate about that corner and these neighbors, that there's got to be a way to, in my opinion, put some type of fencing around it, even though you feel that it's keeping vagrants in. I believe, along with my fellow Commissioner, there should be some electricity and some lighting. It's pitch dark at night, it's going to be a place where people are in there, and eventually it could, you know, I'm worried it's going to start on fire, and the Save the Huntridge is going to be ashes. So with that, I'm going to listen to the comments of my fellow Commissioners, but in hindsight, I think my comment about the cell tower was maybe just a way for all of us to do the right thing and not do something quickly and hasty, because it's such an important corner, and you're very lucky to own it, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Truesdale?
Luck is in the eyes of the beholder some days. And I agree, what you brought forward in front of us is, it's an exciting solution to this project. The concerns that I've had are minimal, but I think it's important for us to put them on the record, because that's the only way that we can let people know in the future what went into making the decisions we're doing. I believe the cell tower, and I understand your lease obligations, and, but I think it's important for us to put on the record the comments with regards to the cell tower, because inevitably, they all come back to us, they all want to go higher, they all want to add to it, they want to co-locate. They got more wrinkles in the cell tower antenna business than even are good friends with the billboard business. But, so, I just want to put on the record that I think the cell tower, and I understand your point of view, is unsightly with the array that's there. If it was stealth, it'd be a different issue. And I'm not sure making a bigger element to hide it, I think would take away from the Huntridge Tower. The issue with securing the site, and I spent quite a bit of time driving around the project over the last several weeks, at different times of the day, just to try and figure out if there's some other options that might make sense as opposed to. But there are certain things, certain nooks and crannies that are unique to the Huntridge building itself, that as this climate gets colder this year, the real risk I see is the potential for homeless or mischief, creating a fire that really would be devastating for what the Friends of the, or the Save the Huntridge Group is concerned about. They, you want to see the building here, you're not concerned about the adaptive reuse? I'm not concerned about the, I think the adaptive reuse is a great concept. And at the end of the day, you know, the tower itself, as it relates to the marquee, is really the phenomenal element that goes into this. I think Commissioner Evans talked about trying to kind of tilt to the history of the Huntridge as you go through the rest of the development. I think you can do, and it's not something that would go into a motion here, but I think you could require the period lighting, signage that's compatible with the Huntridge period and aesthetics, and I think you can make the businesses rather creative, very bright, and address the street. The driveways are existing, and all the times, I'm not so sure that coming in and out of the Huntridge off of Maryland Parkway is that much of an issue, unless somebody's just trying to gun it out of the parking lot and not stop for traffic. So I'm not concerned so much about that. I made previous comments about the, and I'm the last person to be up on this board saying we shouldn't have drive-through restaurants, because I don't have any more kids in college, but I have somebody, I'm sure I'll be paying for something that I need to do more deals in them. But I think because of the pedestrian nature of what the Huntridge is, and how it's been perceived over the years, I think having that pedestrian connection from the corner, and the ability to possibly do some outside cafe space over time, would be rather attractive as opposed to the queued-up cars like across the street at the Burger King that is a lot on a small site. I think the comments with regards to the billboard, I think, since there's an application on the agenda tonight for the billboard issue, separate from this one, I think I'll save those comments for that. But I think if we can come to, you know, an understanding on how this is going to be secure, so the people that are here supporting you feel, you know, have a good idea that the building will be there through, you know, at least best efforts, no one can be one hundred percent certain, but really try to make sure we've dealt with the public safety issue, I think it's a great project and I support it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could ask just one more question in regards to the, I'm dealing with an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven black and white rendering of the parcel, and I'm looking at the layout, in particular back to the drive-through restaurant. Typically, the drive-through restaurants are required to have a trash receptacle associated with them. If I look at what I see, a little square box there immediately to the south of building A, is that the, is that a trash receptacle, or is that parking?
Do you have a set of your plans with you?
I do.
Can you spread them out on the dais and possibly show us where your trash receptacle would be located on the drive-through? I think staff, there we go.
Okay. Vice Chairman? The trash receptacles, the trash receptacles that we had were actually off of the building, so they would actually have to walk to throw their trash away, against, and last I saw it was against this far wall.
That's only one trash receptacle for the whole entire
Well, there was several, that was a trash area, trash enclosure area.
Can you circle the other ones along with that one?
Well, there was a, there's one, two, three, four, five, six areas there, if you can zoom in on that, you'll see six trash receptacles there.
So everybody in the center would have to walk their trash across there to empty it?
Correct.
Right in front of the beautiful Huntridge, and that's big postcard full of garbage from the fast food restaurant?
We're not dealing with the perfect site, sir, we're doing the best we can with this.
I realize what you're trying to do, and I, my heart goes out to you.
Depends on the fast food restaurants, some of them you're so good you have nothing left.
Nothing left over? Wonderful. We've got the trash receptacle, because what I saw, when you look at it on the rendering that you have, you can tell that those appear to be parking spaces. When I saw them, eight-and-a-half-by-eleven black and white rendering, it looked like that's where the trash receptacle's going to be, and my next question is going to be, how is Silver State going to get in and out of there?
Well, I don't think we want trash receptacles right up front of that.
I agree completely. That they are a necessary element of a fast food restaurant.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
Commissioner Ellsworth?
How do you?
Any more comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion. I know we had a lot of discussion on some passionate issues, but just to bring ourselves back to the agenda, our first item 17 is going to be on a variance to allow 136 parking spaces where 158 are required, and to allow one loading zone where two are required. So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion on item 17.
Mr. Chairman...
Mr. Evans?
As you recall, the identical item came before us a month ago, and I made the motion then, finding that there was good cause and that it, I didn't think that that would be a real hardship for the public. So, my motion at that time was for approval, and I'd like to make that motion yet again. Motion for approval of Agenda Item Number 17, the variance for the parking space issue.
Motion on the floor for approval of Item 17. Please cast your vote.
One second before you, because I'd like to make this so we can solve one question that comes up.
Truesdale?
With the way this is noticed, if we agreed to a variance that was two parking, a greater variance of two more spaces, can we do that?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay.
What's your thinking?
I just, I believe that by the time you get into this development, you will be back asking, you'll be putting some trash enclosures in a couple locations, and those will lose one or two spaces. I was just, I mean, the normal, people come back all the time, I just was trying to head it off at the point, but at that point, you know, I'm good with the motion then.
Please cast your vote. A yes vote will be for approval of Item 17. And that motion has passed.
Agenda Item Number 18, again, we voted on this identical item, I believe, on our last meeting, and then we had to rescind the vote. My motion would be for approval. I think this is for the zero-foot corner side building setback. I do have a couple of comments when we get to the site plan regarding the drive-through, but my motion here, I believe, would be for approval.
Motion on the floor for approval of Item 18. A yes vote is for approval. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed. Item 19?
And Agenda Item 19, and I would ask, Ms. Wheeler, maybe you can help me. I know that we, we were here before, we attempted to craft some motions. I still think the fence, the temporary fencing is important, as is some aspect of lighting, whether it be motion lighting and/or some sort of downward-directed lighting on the parking lot, particularly in the rear or any of those areas of the building that would normally be dark and probably create an opportunity for mischief. My thought is that fencing wouldn't be required around the perimeter of the entire site, but rather around the historic building itself. With regard to the drive-through, my thought was that I would like to see maybe that approved, but just to throw this out here, I've seen a number, I went and looked through a number of the drive-throughs in the various Starbucks and some of the even fast food places, and those that were really well landscaped with like birmingham and shrubbery and things like that were relatively unobtrusive, and in many cases, they were difficult to distinguish if there was actually a drive there. I don't know exactly how to go about it. The example that I used that I hope we wouldn't replicate was across the street catty corner, the Burger King, where the drive-through spills out into the parking lot, and I think it creates a public safety issue. So, my thought was that maybe in the landscape aspect of the, of the drive-through portion of the site plan, there could be some language about landscaping or birmingham or something, or perhaps even some sort of administrative later review from the planning commission to sign off on. And I believe the only other issue that, that I had was probably the elimination of Condition Number Two on the condition for approval with regard to the billboard, even though I realize that's another item that we have on the next item on the agenda. So, Ms. Wheeler, maybe you can assist me in that?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Evans, with regard to Condition Number Two, of course, your motion would simply be to eliminate that condition. With regard to the lighting and fencing, I would offer that security lighting and fencing for the historic Hunt Ridge Theater structure, a plan for said shall be submitted to the Department of Planning and Development for approval and implemented within 60 days of final approval by the city council and continuously maintained. With regard to the landscaping around the drive-through and reviewing the plan, there is significant landscape material there, and I believe when the applicant actually implements what they have proposed, there will be considerable and ample landscaping in that area.
And then, I think the only other issue that, that I had discussed was the cell tower site in hopes that when building actually commenced, that maybe it be converted to a stealth design. There's no, is there a review period for cell towers in this one?
Can't those towers be built into the design of the building as opposed to being an obvious tower when you go back in design?
Couldn't something like that be, be asked a little mini Hunt Ridge, huh? It's like the pink Cadillac on top of the...
But, I just want to ask the applicant, is that something that you've been considering?
Well, the building's existing, and the tower's already existing. So, I mean, this was done way before my time.
Wow.
So, I mean, this was something that was approved, I think, in 1990, I mean, 10 years before I owned the Hunt Ridge. So, I mean, I'll do the best I can as far as getting into a stealth, but I tried communicating with these people, and they're not very friendly down there, you know, AT&amp;T with the cell tower, so. And they're not very amenable to changing anything. And, you know, so, I mean, once again, I mean, I could try to do some architectural something around it, if not stealth it, but hopefully you don't hold that over my head.
Thank you.
Director Wheeler?
Our records show that the cell facility was built in 1997, and we do not show a review period on that. Well, if I may, you can't, the cell tower itself is not before you. The commission could require its removal. The fact that there's a private agreement between this property owner and the cell tower is a, is an economic agreement that is his responsibility, but with regard to imposing a review period at this point in time on the cell tower, I wouldn't think so unless the city attorney wishes to offer a different opinion.
No, no, Chairman, I don't, I don't have any additional opinion. I think that the cell tower exists, there's a lease, the cell tower's not before this commission. We'd have to find a way to, if the, if the commission desired to somehow screen the cell tower, you'd have to utilize the applications before you to do so. But, the cell tower, from what I understand, is leased by AT&amp;T Wireless.
Yes.
They have a legal right to their space, and we can't affect the legality or the operation of that cell tower other than if you want some sort of screening on this Hunt Ridge itself, then we need to utilize that. Well, I don't, I don't want to complicate matters, so I guess I could just, in the absence of specifics on the motion, I don't think it was a condition of original approval from the staff. Was it? Was it?
No.
My hope is that, you know, with substantial amount of money going into the new building, and I also believe that that first structure to the far west of the property is going to be added in height, so that would probably additionally help screen the visibility of the, of the cell tower itself. But my thought is that it probably could be considered or reconsidered as a stealth design in the future, but I think I would, rather than complicating matters, just eliminate, not discuss that in the motion, so. Ms. Wheeler?
So, if I have it correct, what the motion is to delete Condition Number Two with regard to the existing billboard and to add the condition with regard to the security lighting and fencing that I previously read.
Yes, and I think you need to add a condition relative to a trash container around that fast food somewhere. I don't think this will work. I know you have restrictions, but to expect those people to haul trash 100 yards or more many times daily, I don't think that's realistic, and through a parking lot where there's lots of traffic. I don't think that's...
Well, therein starts the deterioration of what we thought was going to be historic, like we wanted it to be, I don't know.
Well, the only...
Being a lifelong resident that I passed back in the early 68, when I went to St. Joseph Catholic School and then on to Gorman, but, and that's what's going to happen when you get a fast food pad out there and a restaurant. And what you, I would like to see you focus on is maybe looking at the theater element and trying to revive that, although I know it's, it's tough, but that's what's going to make the sustainability of this in its historic nature. Like, one of the residents that wrote in says, as soon as you get rid of the theater and make it all into retail, there goes the historic nature of it.
Well, my only concern about the detail of the trash enclosure is that we don't know if, and no one knows at this point because there's no leaseholder, you know, no leasing site, we don't know whether it's a coffee bean, a Starbucks, or a Taco Bell.
Well, that was my question, would that make a difference?
And the needs would be very different for all three, so...
Well, that's, that's what we're intending there. That's a split pad there. We're intending more of a coffee shop there.
Well, a coffee shop has trash.
Correct.
And I think to realistically say, I'm carrying my trash 100 yards or more several times a day is not realistic. It's just, and I don't see why we fight putting up trash enclosure near that structure.
Right.
I think we have to do it.
I mean, like, we're looking here, I mean, I've seen a lot of pretty pictures, and, you know, with the economy, the way it is now, and, and we don't know if it's going to be a coffee bean, we don't know if it's going to be a Taco Bell, so there's no guarantees here. And, but once it's approved, whatever the market's going to bear is what's going to yield on that site. So, who knows? Could be Der Wiener Schnitzel, who knows? But I know it's going to ruin the historic integrity of the site once that, that type, whether it's a Starbucks, a coffee bean or not, it's just going to take away from it. Commissioner Evans, you're still on the floor with the motion. I think we've, you've crafted it an approval, asked to delight, delete Item Number Two and added an additional condition, and I think Commissioner Steinman just added another condition onto that, which I think Director Wheeler would need to read in or craft it for us.
That would be if the maker of the motion wishes to...
Well, I don't, I'm kind of perplexed now because where would the trash enclosure be, and what is that, does that compromise the integrity of the architectural design at this point? And to what, do we dictate how big it is, where it is, how tall it is? Is it screened? I understand the intention, but without knowing what kind of, of space is there, I think it's hard to determine size and placement. But I do understand the thought, the concept, and agree with it. So, Director Wheeler?
I think the applicant pointed it out, but I don't think we're going to redesign the trash enclosures at the podium, and I know we held the item as well.
Director Wheeler, maybe you can, maybe you can address the trash enclosure in such a way that...
If I may attempt to do so, my thought would be that something to the effect that a plan for a trash facility, either an exterior trash enclosure pursuant to Title 19, or an interior trash room built into the corner, the pad at the corner of Charleston and Maryland shall be submitted to the Department of Planning and Development for approval prior to issuance of any permits on the subject site. What that would allow for, if the maker of the motion wished to use that condition, would allow for the option of a regular exterior additional trash enclosure adjacent to the drive-through facility, or what is seen in other facilities, which is a trash room that could essentially be built into like the corner of the building in such a fashion as to accommodate the trash without...
I like that. I like that.
And that would allow the option so that depending upon what the tenant draws...
Right.
Would allow staff to be able to make a recommendation as to whether we felt that that could adequately accommodate the trash generated in the facility.
Good. And is there some way that you can maybe help craft that as a condition, because I like that? It allows flexibility...
That was the condition.
Okay. So, we're off.
So, explain that to me again, briefly.
You will submit a plan to the City Department of Planning and Development to show how you intend to accommodate the trash in that pad building. It will either be an exterior trash enclosure facility pursuant to Title 19, or it will, depending upon your tenancy and whatever your plan is, it may be an interior trash room, which is usually done in the corner of the structure, such as a utility room is. And for, then you would have trash that would be placed in that location, and then something to the effect of the employees at the end of the day would then truck it across the parking lot...
Right. I like that.
Rather than having to do it seven times a day.
It gives a lot of flexibility. So, that would be, that would be my motion.
That is the motion on the floor.
And real fast, are we voting on the light issue? Right now is just a major issue. I don't have any power in the building. To get power to the building is extremely expensive.
Commissioner Evans, your condition, first one was regarding the lighting and fencing. Can you repeat that again?
Well, the, Director Wheeler, maybe you go through this again. I'm adamant that you need some aspect of lighting on that site. If the entire two-and-a-half acre site is pitch dark all the time, that building is a magnet for problems, and you have to have some kind of lighting. And my thought is the motion lighting, once you get a vagrant or something that comes onto the property, it'll light up. And if you have some aspect of exterior lighting, Nevada Power has those poles with the, with the light on them, and you can shield it so it's downward-directed, so toward, let's say, the back of the structure itself.
But how do we get power to the site, sir?
Generate.
That's, I don't know, that's not my, you know, I don't know what to tell you. I think this is a relatively inobtrusive and incredibly reasonable option to allow you to move forward with your project. And I, you know, you owe a great debt of gratitude to Pam Hartley and Brian Alvarez and Jack and Mary Joy. These folks have, you know, they've put their reps on the line, and I know for a fact their major intention is to make sure that this building doesn't go away. And having some security there is paramount. It's critical. So, I, that's something you've got to work out, but I would think between Nevada Power and, you know, you can, you can figure that out.
Well, I mean, I would just have to check on the cost of that. I don't think it's as cheap as you would think.
I don't, you know, I don't know what to tell you. If I could write you a check, I would, but...
I understand.
It's, I think it's an incredibly inexpensive solution.
So, the motion's on the floor. Let me ask the applicant, are you in agreeance with the conditions that we just explained?
I'm sorry, sir? I'm sorry, sir?
You, you in agreeance with the conditions?
Do I have a choice? I mean, I honestly, I mean, I don't know what the cost would be and all of a sudden I have to go in and find out. I don't know how much it would cost to light this place. You have no idea the destruction that was done there.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know.
Well, we're going to go ahead and vote on the motion, and we will vote on it as Commissioner Evans proffered up with the two additional comments and the deletion of number two. So let us go ahead and get this business out of the way. Motion on the floor for approval of item 19 as amended conditions as read in by Director Wheeler. Please cast your vote. I'd like to re-change my vote to reflect the no vote. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Yeah, let's everybody re-vote, please. Only 11 days out, may as well get this right. And that motion has passed.
And all matters go forward to City Council on November 19th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 20, is that, did you read that into the record?
No, we're going to do that right now. Item 20, RQR 29809, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor, owner ECT Holdings LLC, request for a two-year required review on an approved variance which allowed a 40-foot-tall 14-by-48-foot off-premise advertising billboard sign 290 feet from an existing off-premise advertising billboard sign where 300 feet is the minimum distance separated, separation required. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, this billboard sign lacks the final inspection for the building permit, and as such, staff is recommending denial of the request. Please note additional protest and an additional support have been received.
Good afternoon, Rod Carter, 2880 Meade Avenue. On behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor, I have submitted today to the Building Department the letter to take care of the building permit issue, and I hope that that takes care of planning issues as well. We have been out on the property, we've done some substantial cleaning up to the billboard, the palm tree that's growing up from underneath it, we've done, you know, we've played a pretty big part in trying to help clean that area up, and hopefully we can, I appreciate your support.
Well, why do we only do this before it gets ready to come before the commission?
As far as cleaning it up?
Yeah. Y'all dress them up good when it's time to come to the meeting. That's, I got to give you that, but this is a public hearing. Does anybody like to speak for or against this item? Please come forward. Mr. Farlow?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Mr. Chairman, I absolutely agree with you on this. Why is it they wait until the last, just before the commission meeting, they run out there and clean the thing up? I mean, these things have to be held on contingent, these permits have to be contingent upon cleaning up these things and keeping them clean at all times. This is ridiculous. The other thing is, if these people, whether it's cell towers, billboards, or anybody else, is starting giving the property owners a bunch of crap that they can't have a stealth designer, whatever else it is, then I think that we ought to make it hell on earth here at this planning commission the next time that these people come in and ask for a variance. It's a tail wagging the dog, and it's got to stop. The second thing, though, I wish that someone, it's, going back to the billboard, can someone tell me the difference in elevation from the curbside on Charleston to the doorstep of the Hunt Ridge Theater? Because there's a terrific elevation, and I think that may mitigate some of the billboards or, or the front, the pads, whatever, but there's, I think there's probably maybe 10-foot difference in there. Can somebody tell me about that? Thank you.
I'm trying to get you an answer. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Let me defer that question to the applicant. If you have any idea of how to measure that from curbside to the front door, to check the elevation of the billboard.
The elevation of the billboard, Commissioner, as it, where it stands today, is 40 feet overall in height. As far as the slope of how the Hunt Ridge property is laid out, I'm sorry, sir, I can't answer that.
Give us a guess. Director Wheeler?
There is, there is a substantial height differential which does make the, allows the billboard to appear lower because it is, it is beneath that elevation, but no, I would not have that figure, and I, we don't have engineered plans at this time.
Mr. Farlow, we don't have an answer for you tonight. Thank you. Any, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the board?
For the applicant, one question, or a couple of questions with regard to the board. With the new Flex, I mean, this was built as a original board where they used to glue on all of the advertising.
Yes, sir.
And now with the new Flex, do you need that railing on the bottom or the whole?
The catwalk system?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, we do. For maintenance purposes, for lighting purposes, to get up there to, you know, for safety of crews.
You guys-
The only, the only technology that has led us to eliminate the catwalk system is the LED technology where, where sending in copy from the office via computer.
Mr. Chairman, I-
Commissioner Evans?
If we're ready, I'm prepared to make a motion, but with a caveat.
So moved.
Mr. Carter, I would concur, the condition, not just of this sign, but this billboard, but all throughout, you guys have got to do a better job. If this industry wants to keep billboards, you've got to keep them clean, and you've got to keep them well-maintained, and throughout the process, not just when they come up for review. But having said that, I don't find that this is, you know, a blighted sign, or it doesn't, you know, inhibit the view of red rock or anything of that nature, but I would ask you to please make sure that they're well-maintained. My motion would be for approval subject to the, if approved, conditions as listed by our staff.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 20. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
That goes forward to Council on November 19th.
Thank you. Item 23, and 24, SUP 29146, applicant Nerissa Thomas, owner Larry D. and Nerissa L. Thomas for a proposed truck rental use at 3700 North Rancho Drive. Item 24, SDR 29787, for a proposed truck rental use with chain-linked fence and a waiver of all landscaping requirements. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, staff is unable to support the numerous requested waivers associated with the site plan review, and as such is recommending denial. In regards to the special use permit, the special use permit has triggered the site plan review, and staff finds that it cannot be conducted in a harmonious manner as it does not conform to the Title 19 requirements regarding landscaping requirement and recommends denial. If approved, staff does have a revised condition. Condition number one to be revised to read as follow. All development shall be in conformance with the site plan date stamped 9/24/08 and the landscape plan date stamped 10/10/08, except as amended by conditions herein.
Thank you. Applicant?
Nerissa Thomas, 6500 West El Campo Grande Avenue. Yes, this property was acquired by my parents when we moved here in 1952, and in 1991, my husband and I built this, our auto repair shop here, and that's our main business. We have agreed to pave the back and re-stripe, refinish and stripe the front parking lot in order to do these truck rentals, and then we designed this proposal, this landscaping proposal, to make it look nicer and conform with the businesses surrounding us, adding trees and shrubs and making it very, more attractive, however, not up to current code. We have been there for quite a while. There is also the condition of the off-site improvements on Duncan. If you have the-
Any reason why you can't meet the required landscape requirements?
Okay, it's just quite a bit more, okay, a lot of the landscape requirements, I did propose this-
Quite a bit more what? Trees and?
Excuse me, I did propose this diagram two weeks ago, and that's why I'm coming back tonight, because staff had to have time to look at it. And like you said, if it's approved, then according to that, they said, sounds like they said that was okay, right?
I'll have to ask staff.
Isn't that what?
Mr. Reink.
The additional landscaping provided is within the existing buffers as exists. Staff is not supporting the requested waivers in regard to the rest of the property, where substantial amount of landscaping is not being provided, and waivers of zero are requested, that allow zero where 15 feet and eight feet is required along the rest of the portions of the property. The revised landscape, as I indicated, would add additional trees, but those trees do not meet Title 19 standards as they're 15-gallon trees where the requirement is 24-inch box.
Okay. Thank you. Continue.
Yes, so anyway, we're hoping that, we expect that this will make it look a whole lot nicer. We're going to have to spend quite a bit on the paving and all of the upgrades just to be able to keep doing what we need to be doing. We're a small family business, and we wanted to pass our business down to our son, and if you, if you look at this overview, you can see that we have developed the front portion of the property on Rancho Drive and the corner of Rancho and Duncan. The back part is where we want to park the trucks, and we really only, it's a temporary, I mean, it's part of our business right now, but we want to be able to keep that back part so that we can develop it at a future date, possibly, you know, lease spaces or storage units or something so that we have some, a means for our son when we pass the property down and the business down for him to develop it later. And what we would like, not to get out of developing it the way the city requires, we don't want to get out of our responsibility, we understand the requirements of property ownership and business ownership, but what we would like to do is to defer the offsites and make a covenant for future construction for the required improvements when that develop, when that property is developed further. Right along there is where the offsites aren't completed.
I'll try to get you an answer-
From there.
Through our city attorney on making covenants, but I don't know if that-
That was a word that someone gave me to use.
I don't know if that's-
To defer it, to defer it until we develop that property. If we have to pay to do the offsites and the sidewalks, curbs and gutters and all of that, before we decide what we're going to do with that property, then we'd have to, you know, rip out sidewalks and block walls and things like that before, you know, when we get ready to develop it in the future.
Okay.
Am I making sense?
Continue.
But what we would like to do meanwhile, since this area right here is not developed, what we would do is grade it, grade it and remove all the native plants and grasses from that unimproved portion, which is where the sidewalk would go, which is not there now, and grade and level it and install quarter-inch minus decorative rock, which would provide a path for pedestrians, as they, for the very few that are, it's very unused street. But Dan's driveline is back here, and then we have the sidewalk up here, and so a clean walking path would make it look nicer and provide something temporary until we develop the back part of that property. But if we could defer that, there you go, that's the perfect picture.
You have trucks back there already?
Not now. We, we became a truck rental agent and then realized we needed a license to do that, applied for the license, they said you need a special use permit, applied for that, and then the site development review, and then we quit doing the trucks while we're going through all of this. We don't have any trucks on the property now.
As of August 5th, '08?
I'm not sure of the date, but there, we're not doing that business now.
Okay.
Until we get the proper permits.
Permits.
So this is a large amount of improvements to bring everything up to code for our small family, and we can't do everything all at once. And so it's already reaching, you know, a large financial investment. So I believe I've, I have a, a letter from Dan Shumala, who is Dan's driveline, the business directly to the northeast side of our property, supporting our special use permit and our, I'd like to submit that.
Submit that to the clerk for the record. Thank you.
And-
Does that conclude your comments?
Sure.
We'll indulge you more than.
Well, I just, we just have, we have a lot of customers and businesses who, who we've talked to about, you know, what our situation is and are in support of our, getting approval for these permits and site development review. I think that's everything.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody like to speak for or against this item? Please come forward at this time.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. The applicant states that she can't do everything at once. She also states that she's been there, what, 50 years, and they've done nothing, and they're going to pass it down to their son that somewhere out in the ether may correct some of these problems. We had a picture of this on the screen, it looks like something from the third world country. No sidewalks, chain-linked fence and that. Now is the time to get this done while they're asking for the special use permit. The special use permit stays with the property forever. So if we're going to get this done, it's got to be done now. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Carrie Cox, 5709 Patricia Avenue. I have lived in this neighborhood for 14 years. We have been customers of Larry Thomas for the last 12 years. This is a family-owned and operated business. It is providing a valuable service to the community with honesty and integrity, a commodity which is sadly lacking in most of the businesses in this community today. It would bring great financial hardship to this family if they are required to bring their existing business property up to current codes for new businesses. At a time when small businesses are failing at an alarming rate, I would be saddened to see a viable business close and more families lose everything they have worked for all their lives because they were required to feel what to me are basically unreasonable and unrealistic government demands. I know there have to be basic standards to keep our city safe and our quality of life high, however, I do not believe another empty building and homes lost in my neighborhood to be of benefit to anyone. I therefore respectfully ask that the requested waivers and plans be submitted and approved. This property, from the pictures here, does not look that great, however, if you look at the rest of the businesses on Duncan, both sides, you'll see they're in far worse shape. They have done a lot of work, these pictures were taken, most of the time it does not look like this. And I really, I would hate to see these people lose this business because they cannot afford to put out hundreds of thousands of dollars or even thousands of dollars that they cannot afford. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
David Shea, 7524 Enchanted Hills Drive. I represent Thomas's neighbor, West Care, Nevada, to the south, and director of facility operations. They've operated ever since we have been there, which has been about five years, I believe, this month, operating our facility. They've had truck rental operations there prior to all of this use permit stuff happening. It's been harmonious for us, they've been good neighbors, they help provide fleet services for the vehicles that we use for our treatment programs, and we support their application as they have submitted it to you all.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak on this item? Please come forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll entertain questions and comments from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions if I may.
Yes, sir.
I think that somewhere there's a balance here, somewhere there's a, a middle ground, because on one hand, I agree with Mr. Farlow that no one's trying to tell you that you have to come up to code on your longtime 50-some-year business, except for that you're asking for a new special use permit to actually expand your business. And what I'm concerned with is in part, the, you're providing, I think it's 35,000 square feet of asphalt is what it says, for what the staff backup says that the maximum you would ever have at one time on the property is parking for five rental trucks. And I guess my question is, why would you need 35,000 square feet of asphalt for five trucks? And, and the asphalt thing is multiple-fold for me. I think everybody- I think everybody would agree it's fairly ugly. And without the shading, the canopy of trees, et cetera, it's been determined and proven that the asphalt in our community is what's changing our environment. It's creating a heat island effect. And so I'm wondering how we can get to a place where maybe you can plant some trees. I saw that you have the chain link fencing. I wouldn't necessarily want to require that you put in a fancy, multiple-thousand-dollar block wall, but my thought was you can create some drought-tolerant plantings around the perimeter of that fence. You can put cat's claw, which climbs the fence and creates a vine effect. There's a whole bunch of things that you could do that would be modest and would actually make me feel a lot better about pushing the green button that allows you to do your business. So I'm curious about how my fellow commissioners feel about this and how we can accommodate your needs and yet not sell the city short.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, Steinman.
I have a question.
Hi.
I've heard a discussion about money. It's too expensive. It is, could be cost prohibitive. But I, I agree with Commissioner Evans in that why do we have to spend so much money on asphalt? Because the buffers are really what we want. That's what the neighbors want, that's what we want, and they're asking for a waiver to reduce the landscape buffer. Why can't you save money on the asphalt and reduce the amount and use that to get the landscaping done? Is there a reason why you can't do that?
Let me ask what you're asking then. The landscaping that we have across Rancho and halfway down Duncan, now, are you asking me to bring that up to code? Because it, the code, I think, is 15 feet deep where we have 14 and all the finger islands into the, into the parking lot that we would have to cut out the asphalt up there. Are we talking about all of that? Or are you talking about around that parking area?
You can move over. Those mics are alive in the middle. So yes, we can hear you as well. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Or are you talking about around this parked, storage area?
I'm talking specifically along Duncan, the surface street of Duncan and Rancho. Those are the areas where...
In the front?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, taking, this is already asphalted right here. And if we have to widen that or put the finger islands that are required and the increased landscaping, we'd have to cut into our parking area already, what saw cut, I guess you call it, into the finger islands into the, to the front parking area. But you're saying not, not, you're not talking about this?
No, I'm focused on the surf, on the streets. Because that's where everybody's gonna see this. I mean, your backside is, is an alleyway, if I understand correctly, there between your property and Tommaso Motive.
And this is a...
Correct?
Right. We're right here.
Right. And that is an alleyway. So I'm looking there along the street line. I mean, I, it seems like the plans I saw asked us to reduce that down in order to save money so that we didn't have to do as much. And I'm saying, why? Why do we need to do that? Why can't we keep it like it should be and then save money elsewhere if money really is the issue?
Did you, we have this proposal to increase all of the landscaping and improve the drip system and put the rock in so that it would look, so that it would match. We have Kawasaki right next to us here, and this would look, you know, like it corresponds with their landscaping over on this side. And would they have the rock and, you know, a few trees and bushes?
So it'd be, it would be continuous on Rancho Drive. Everything would be the same?
Right. It would, it would match Kawasaki right next to us.
All right. So now to turn the corner and go down Duncan.
Right.
Your proposal, that you don't meet code, that you shrink, keep that down at, what, eight feet instead of 15? Is that what you're requesting?
This is, this is 10 feet wide right here.
Okay.
Currently, 10.
All right. And then can you keep that all the way through to the end of your, of your property line?
You're talking about going all the way back here?
Yes.
What would you want us to do? Could we not do the offsites too also? You're wanting, you're wanting me to put all this landscaping down here?
I want to make it look nice in that neighborhood there because I agree. It doesn't look good with the, the grass that's out of control, the shovs out of control. I want nice landscaping along Duncan, which is what our code requires.
Maybe we could do some, a few trees, some trees down this, down Duncan?
I'm wondering, Mr. Commissioner Ellsworth, I'm wondering if maybe the applicant can't meet with our staff and maybe come up with some sort of a resolution. Because I really, I think we're on the same page. I want to find some opportunity for the special use permit to go forward, but yet, and I don't know, I'm absolutely in agreement with you, Commissioner Ellsworth, about where you're going with this. I just don't know the details. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't behoove the applicant to hold this for an opportunity to meet with, Director Wheeler, do we have a landscape architect on our staff?
We have several.
Oh, okay.
Let, excuse me. Well, because I think I know where the commissioner's headed with this, but the reality is, the applicant is the property owner and the developer in this case. And it's really incumbent on the applicant to bring forward if they would like to encourage us to come up with some compromise, bring forward the drawings or the things to support that. I, I'm a little concerned that we're, we're gonna try and redesign it, encourage staff time, engineer it, and then waive it at the end of the day.
Can I propose something?
What?
I was given this, you know, I brought this last time and you gave me two weeks to submit it to staff.
Yeah, and I'm afraid we're about, almost about to go down that road again.
How about I just, how about we just clean this up and do the chat and the gravel like, like I proposed and, and do a row of trees here that would shade and help block some of the vision from the street to the...
You can propose that, but it still has to go back to staff. And then they're gonna tell you how far apart those trees have to be and all of that. So, you know, I understand you talk about, about, about the, the financial aspect of it, but you may want to look at even a professional consultant that may come aboard and be able to show you the, the types of requirements that the city requires. Or you can sit down with staff and they'll give you a lesson one-on-one on design and the types of stuff that you need to put on that plan. That'd be a suggestion that I'd like to offer.
Staff seems to just say, this is code and you're not up to code. So I can't really get conversation going.
Yes, and then you need to determine what type of tree, 24-inch box, and then the type of trees that can go in that. I believe all that is available, Director Wheeler, for, for the public, isn't it?
Yeah, of course. If I may dare attempt, the plan that, that has been submitted during the abeyance period, which is dated October 10th, which is the one in your package and, and before you this evening. As Mr. Rankin indicated, it does show additional trees while they are 15-gallon and not 24-inch box. Again, if I'm understanding the intention of the, the commission, there, your concern as, as staff's is also, is with the perimeter. And were you inclined to do so? The plan that she has submitted at dated October 10th, the perimeter landscaping shown on Duncan could merely be required to extend the rest of the, to the full extent of the property along Duncan. That, that would be simple. Were the commission to wish to do so, you could make the 15-gallon, 24-inch box, which would then meet code. The other issue that needs to be assured that it's clear is that there can be no vehicles parked or stored on any unpaved surface at any time. But the staff is recommending only five vehicles, rental vehicles be parked here so that the 35,000 square feet certainly doesn't have to be paved. That's far more than what is necessary for five rental vehicles. With regard to the offsites, I would seek the guidance of Mr. Anderson with regard to that. But I think the, the most simple condition that could be imposed would be to extend the proposed landscaping the length of Duncan if that were the wish of the commission.
Would you please explain the use of chat? Are you proposing a sidewalk made out of chat?
I'm sorry, that was a word that my landscaper used.
Yeah, I know exactly what it is.
Oh, is it?
It's powder, basically.
Well, I think it was quarter-inch.
Well, it's quarter-inch minus. It's called chat.
Okay.
And, but is that to be done in place of a real sidewalk? Is that what he's proposing?
That's what I'm asking, so that we can defer the offsites.
That won't work because that'll just, first rain, that's gone. It'll just wash away. So it's just not...
Do you have, maybe could we do some gravel or something so that we don't...
Well, if you're gonna do gravel, you've gotta do half to three-quarter inch to make it stay in place, yes.
Sure.
Yeah, so I think they need to work with you on that. Really.
Commissioner Ellsworth?
Yeah, my suggestion is, is simply is, I, I love your idea. I want to see, and make money and make the, the property profitable for you. But we need to make it harmonious with the, the area there, and we really should see something done. And I would, I would recommend that you put together a plan for the landscaping down Duncan and then, and then come back to us with that so that we can see exactly what you're wanting to do. So my recommendation that we would obey this for a period of time and let you take care of that.
Is, is this adequate for Rancho and the...
Well, I'd like to see it all in one, in one shot. So my recommendation would be...
You gotta get rid of 15-gallon. And you gotta go to 24-inch. 15-gallon's just a, a bush, and it'll take years to grow.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor to, to hold this item. Staff, can I have a date?
Make it November 19th. And Mr. Rankin, please give Ms. Thomas your card and then we'll have the appropriate staff person sit down with you, Ms. Thomas, to help you on this, okay?
And also, Ms. Thomas, if, if we're gonna put Commissioner Ellsworth to work, if you probably want to contact the city to get in contact with him, you may also, between now and the next meeting, try to make an appointment and sit with him as well and say, this is what I went to the city with, according to what you told me to do, this is something that, that's doable. I want to see what your thoughts is so that when we come back to the next meeting, we've seemed to worked out some of those things. Okay? So there's a motion on the floor to hold items 23 and 24 until the November 9th, planning commission, 19th.
Mr. Chairman, that would be the November 20th, planning commission meeting.
I'm sorry. I probably could cancel.
November 20th, planning commission meeting.
Correct.
Thank you. Please cast your votes. And that motion has passed. And we'll go ahead and take a 10-minute break at this time, and when we come back, we'll begin with item 34.
Okay. I do have it, actually. Yeah, you're great. Your contact information?
Should we come in back the next meeting?
Top of the meat?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah?
I thought I was the only one that consented to the one motion. Number eight? Yeah. Well, it's not me, but it is me, but it's not me.
It is.
Halloween. I don't know what I'm doing. I'm just, anything that's got a billboard, I'm running off immediately. Mistaken identity. Yeah. You want to play? Shot like in 82 the other year, I was about ready to commit golf suicide. I'm sorry. No, I've, I've still, I've still have two more items on.
Anytime you'd like to play. That's where, well, Commissioner Steinman, I've known, I was the head pro at Palm Valley for 10 years at his home course. So, yeah, Palm Valley, Highland Falls and all that, yeah. Anytime you'd like to go up there. How did it, was the oversea good? They just reopened. Yeah. That's typical for up there, you know? Yeah, back in the early 90s when we went from regular irrigated water to the reclaimed water, the, the mayhem, the detriment to that golf course, to Highland Falls specifically, was just a nightmare. Palm Valley took to it. We had to go through a polana, but once the greens like overtook all the polana, or the polana overtook all the greens, it turned out phenomenal. And then, yeah, because of, of basically stripping of all the nutrients and putting it back out there, it was just, yeah, yeah, it just shocked it in such a way that it just, and really was just, the impact it had was substantial. And three years ago, they went and put, I think, about 12, six to 12 million, six to 12 million dollars into Palm Valley, and they ripped all the greens out and rebuilt it and so, and Highland is just...
We'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order. We have another bit of housekeeping to attend to. Please name an address for the record.
Commissioner Groen, drive Carter, 2880 Meade Avenue. On behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor, a little mistaken identity going on here. I had voted on number eight moving forward. I need to recognize that that is not a Clear Channel billboard, and I need to have that recalled and voted on without my...
Thank you. I think proper protocol is to rescind that. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Commissioner, if you want to rescind, then you'll vote, then you'll rehear.
Like to make a motion to rescind, or like to have a motion made to rescind item number eight?
So moved.
That motion has been offered. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed. I want to ask, is there an applicant in the audience on item number eight for TJP Nevada Limited Partnership? Seeing none, we'll get a staff report on this and we'll make a decision as a, as a commission whether we want to vote on this item or hold it.
Mr. Chairman, the subject sign is in moderately good condition and has finalized permits. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this required review. Please note additional letters of protest have been received. Thank you.
This is a public, no, this is one motion, one vote. If there's a public hearing, anybody want to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, we'll close the item. Commissioner Quinn, this is in your ward. There is no applicant at your, we'll go at your pleasure, ma'am.
Due to the fact that there is no applicant for this item and that there are additional protests noted, I would like to hold it for 30 days and hopefully he'll come forward, and if not, we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to hold item eight, RQR 29711 for 30 days. That date would be?
November 20th.
November 20th, 2008. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed. Moving on to item 34. Item 34, ZON 30369, applicant Forest City, owner Livework LLC at all, from CM Commercial Industrial to C2 General Commercial adjacent to the east side of Main Street at the northeast and southeast corners of Bonneville and the southeast corner of St. Louis. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed rezoning to a C2 General Commercial zoning district will allow for consistency with the existing general plan designation of C Commercial. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this application. Please note additional letters of support have been received. Thank you.
Applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Tabitha Fittament, 3-800 Howard Hughes Parkway, here on behalf of Forest City. We appreciate staff's favorable recommendation. I'm here to answer questions if you have them.
This is a public hearing. Anybody like to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to know if the applicant is, is making this into something harmonious with the arts district. Thank you.
Okay. We will ask that question. Would anybody like to speak on, on this? Would anybody like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Would you please answer the question?
Absolutely. This application is actually just in order to make the zoning consistent with the general plan designation, there will be future applications that this board and the city council will see for the overall development of the site that I do think will be consistent with what's planned for the Arts District.
Thank you.
These lots are within the office core area of the downtown Centennial Plan.
Comments or questions from the board? Vice Chairman Trowbridge, and then Commissioner Evans.
Ready for motion?
Ready for motion.
Okay, in regards to item thirty-four, zoning thirty-three-sixty-nine, make a motion for approval, so we tell staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item thirty-four, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Go forward to council on October, November nineteenth.
Item thirty-five, WVR two-nine-eight-six-five, applicant John Stellupi Jr., owner Centennial Azure LLC, waiver of the Town Center Development Standards to allow exposed neon border where exposed neon is prohibited at sixty-two hundred Centennial Boulevard. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, due to the self-imposed hardship created by the applicant as a result of them proposing a material that is not permitted within Town Center, staff is recommending denial of this application. Please note additional letters of support have been received. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant?
Mike Bellon, fourteen oh eight Saintsbury Drive. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening, thank you for your time. First, I wanna speak to staff's recommendation for denial for this application and their reference to a self-imposed hardship. I understand that their recommendation based on the fact that this request does not conform to the Town Center design standards, but in truth, there really is no particular hardship or self-imposed or otherwise. I would never presume to waste this commission's, the staff's, or city council's time if there had not first been a review of this request with Councilman Ross's office, and I believe Director Wheeler as well, who both, I understand, gave their support and approval for it. It is simply a matter of what we believe is fair and balanced and will create an equal opportunity for businesses to compete in this area. The request is to allow a minimal amount of one color of neon on Centennial Hyundai, an auto dealership in the Centennial Hills area. While it is true that neon is not permitted to be used in this area, I've met with Councilman Ross, whose ward this facility is in, as well as with Director Wheeler at the current planning department. I've showed them that, for whatever reason, there are many businesses in the Centennial Hills area which currently have neon on their buildings. As it states in my letter of justification, a meeting was held with staff members, Ms. Wheeler, and representatives of the Councilman Ross's office, and I was told that because of the evidence we presented at that time, regarding these other businesses, they were all in support of this request and felt it only be fair and just that it be approved. I have some copies of the photos of the other buildings in the area that are using neon, and would like to present them to you at this time for the record if you feel it necessary. Therefore, as we understand, there have been no protests and some support for this application, we respectfully request for your approval at this time.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, the recommendation of the entire Department of Planning and Development is for denial on this project.
Thank you. I find it hard to believe, you guys ask for fair and equal, when your dealerships build the biggest building, you say nobody can see you, but yet you're on Centennial on Auto Row. If I wanted to buy a car, I know exactly where you guys are all lined up-
Absolutely.
And I don't need neon to bring me there.
No doubt, no doubt.
This is a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience for or against it? Please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Follow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. And I differ with you, Chairman, we need all the neon we can get in this town, and why in the world is it prohibited in the first place? Is this because it's an open pan channel sign, or what's the deal here? Anyway, I'd like to have that address as why it's prohibited. Another thing, my comment is just take this neon and take it times ten.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on item thirty-five? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'll ask staff the question of why neon is prohibited in Town Center.
Mr. Chairman, at the time of the creation of the Town Center special planned area, the aesthetics and design characteristics which were incorporated into the special planned area, this area has specific design standards for signage, as well as building materials to keep a consistent aesthetic throughout the whole special planned area. And as part of that original plan, neon is, was deemed as a prohibited material, as it was basically not the strip.
So all the towns don't have to look like downtown?
That's correct.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing, comments or questions from the board?
Do we have those pictures you were gonna hand up?
I do, Commissioner.
I mean, one comment is, I think the owner of this dealership was here when all of these Town Center standards were adopted, and I think was an active participant in adopting them.
I believe you're correct, Commissioner.
So, it kinda goes to your comment that, you know, we just want a fair and equal playing field to work under, 'cause you guys helped develop the playing field, now it may not be as fair, but-
No, I understand completely, and we agree with that, and we agree with the Town Center standards, and would have been happy to conform to them, but after we built the dealerships, we take a look around and find out that there are other auto dealerships in that area, almost all of them, that have been permitted to use neon. So in an opportunity to have a fair and balanced presentation of the facility, we'd ask for just the one color of the neon to be applied to the building.
But if you guys add this neon, what's that gonna do to add it to the price of cars?
I honestly don't know, sir, I am not an auto dealer.
They're not getting any cheaper, gas isn't any cheaper. Hey, how's that bus service going?
It's wonderful out on Centennial, and it's on time.
I just, I'm not sure where the neon came on these other, because it's always, it has been a restricted element. I know on the border, that's a corporate building, I'm not sure if that's neon on there or not. Can't imagine most of these things went through CHARC, but maybe they did.
Can I speak to CHARC?
Commissioner Evans?
Steinman.
Did you get us in, or Commissioner Steinman?
Well-
Did you get us into this?
Well, I was chair of ARC before it was disbanded, and Commissioner Dunham served on there with me. This application came in to CHARC, and I remember it distinctly, and they asked for neon at that time, and we denied it at that time, and it's in the, it's happened on or about January of, let's see, when was it?
February of oh eight.
February of oh eight, yeah. And it was specifically asked on here, and these pictures were produced at that time. And there is in fact neon on the In-N-Out, and on the border, and it is there. Now, I'm not sure those properties are in the actual area that prohibits the neon, that was one of our issues at the time. So this has already been addressed, and the commission needs to note it was turned down by CHARC before.
Thank you. Any other, Commissioner Evans?
I'm curious who served on CHARC at the time, because, yeah, I'm assuming it's an identical application, or for exposed neon. Is it a, the membership consists of members of the planning commission?
Commissioner Dunham and I were on there with three members of the public.
That are appointed by the-
That are appointed by-
The mayor?
By the mayor, councilman, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And that group has been disbanded, if you wanna know.
Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
Yes, on the aerial map that shows where your subject property is, where is your parcel in relationship to Jim Marsh's Chrysler Jeep, and the Mazda dealership, and the Mitsubishi dealership?
They are all on Centennial Center Boulevard. This subject property is about three or four hundred, about three hundred yards to the southeast of Mitsubishi and Mazda, and then Jim Marsh's facility is further to the north, but all on Centennial Center.
So they're significantly outside of the area we're speaking of?
They're all on the same street on Centennial Center.
Right, but they're like a half mile away in each direction?
No, well, it would be difficult for me to say, it's a lot closer than that, they're all within that same auto row. There've been an area that was approved for general commercial facilities for auto dealership specifically, and they're all right within that same general area.
Commissioner Wheeler, or Director Wheeler, is that all within the Town Center Development Standards area?
If I may, I apologize, there was a substantial amount of research that was done with regard to these pictures, that indicated how they were approved, and at what point in time, and pursuant to what standards, and unfortunately, that does not seem to be attached to your report this evening. It was prepared by city staff, and that is not the applicant's fault nor responsibility to have brought that forward this evening, and I feel that you're at a disadvantage without that research, and it may well be in the commission's interest to obey this for two weeks so that that package can be made available to you.
I'd like it noted that the last item in our package is a letter from the city to the Young Electric Sign Company, in which the city council considered appeal of the decision of CHARC, and at that time, they denied the appeal, so, they've already considered the neon at that time.
Well, in light of him bringing these photos to me, which shows clearly there's neon on some of the businesses all over, I'm curious to read the research to see why this particular one is prohibited from it, so, I don't know how the applicant's feel is on holding this and allowing us to get that in in the next two weeks.
We would be comfortable with obeying this for as much time as you need to do the research you require.
Excuse me, um-
Commissioner Quinn?
I didn't get one of those packages, so could you, oh, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I apologize, I was misinformed, I thought there were only seven of you on the panel.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'll support the abeyance, and I'd be curious to see the history as well, but, once again, I have to wonder why we created standards for Town Center when we appear to just be waiving them. And Commissioner, you're correct, and it looks like the same exact issue went before CHARC, it was denied, was appealed to the city council, and seven months ago, the city council denied it, and we're here again, so, I don't, I can't speak to the reasoning for the others, but I always am perplexed where, when we created the Town Center, and the standards, we wanted to raise the architectural standard of the city, and the Town Center was supposed to be something special, and Commissioner Truesdale, I think you were probably here at the time, the stakeholders, I think, agreed to the standards, and yet, we seem to chip away at it, so, I have some serious concerns about the integrity of whatever we decided way back when, and whether or not it still holds true. Thank you.
Thank you. Like to have a motion to hold item thirty-five for two weeks. So moved. Motion on the floor to hold item thirty-five, two weeks will be November the sixth. Please cast your votes. And that motion has passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. May I make one comment? I'm a single father, and I couldn't get a babysitter tonight, so the only way I could get my seven-year-old son to let my sixteen-year-old son babysit him is I promised I would say goodnight to him on TV.
It's all yours.
Thank you very much. Good night, Chenzo, good night, Zach, I love you.
Good night.
Clean the kitchen before I get home.
Tell him you're bringing him a car?
No, just kidding.
And there are seven commissioners here for future events.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item thirty-six, VAR two-nine-eight-three-three, applicant owner Edith Fagan, to allow a proposed six-foot tall wrought iron fence with pilasters where five feet is the maximum height allowed within the front yard at one-six-zero-four Becky Circle. Staff?
Chairman, before they begin, I notice that I'm in the notification area, so I'll be abstaining on this matter.
So noted.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has created self-imposed hardship by proposing a fence that is one foot taller than what is allowed by code, therefore, staff is recommending denial of this application. Please note additional letter of support has been received. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant?
David Spru with Artistic Iron Works, one-oh-five West Charleston, here for Mrs. Fagan. Be happy to answer any questions you have. What we're proposed to do is actually put in two foot of block wall with six-foot pilasters and four foot of wrought iron on top of that wall.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing, anybody in the audience for or against this item, please come forward. Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you. Artistic Iron has done some great work, does he have something to show how this is gonna look?
It's hand drawings, but not a whole lot to it. It's our shop drawings that I brought with me, so, be a little bit-
If you want, you can put it right on the podium in the center square. Give us a quick-
What we call a flame design, it's gonna be pickets uprooted from the bottom, let's see if I can get both those in at the same time.
Okay.
It's a very, very nice and decorative design that's going on there, it's one of our more popular in artistic designs that we put into gates and fencing.
Very good. No neon, huh?
No neon this time.
Thank you. Very good. We'll close the public hearing, any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on item thirty-six.
Make a motion on thirty-six. VAR two-nine-eight-three-three, move for approval, subject condition.
Motion on the floor for approval of item thirty-six, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed, showing Commissioner Evans abstaining.
And that is final action with an absence-
Thank you.
In the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Item thirty-seven, VAR two-nine-eight-seven-three, applicant Blanca Sosa, owner TDJ Family Limited Partnership, to allow for twenty-one parking spaces where thirty-five parking spaces are required for a proposed beauty salon at two-five-five-eight through two-five-six-four South Valley View Boulevard. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the addition of the proposed beauty salon would intensify the parking requirements of this already parking impaired site by requiring an additional fourteen parking spaces. As the subject site can only facilitate twenty-one parking spaces, the proposed beauty salon would require a forty percent reduction in required parking to be able to operate. As the proposed use is too intense for the subject location, staff is recommending denial of the variance request. Please note additional letters of protest and support have been received. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant?
I'm Veronica Holmes-Lidback, on behalf of the applicant, this is the applicant.
Good evening, this is Blanca Sosa, and I'm the owner of the proposed-
Your address for the record, please.
Yeah, it's twenty-five sixty-four Valley View.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I happened to meet Blanca by going into her beauty salon one night, as she was waiting very late for customers to come in, and happened to overhear her talking on the phone to her daughter who was in tears because she had just gotten her beauty license, and her mother found a location at Valley View, I believe the address is twenty-five sixty-four Valley View, which is at the corner of Sahara and Valley View. Now, I know this is being denied, and it says because it's a self-inflicted hardship, my reason for wanting to help her is that she went out, found this location, spent two thousand dollars to put her daughter through beauty college, spent twelve thousand dollars fixing this location up because the landlord nor the leasing agent, which I'm not sure if the leasing agent even knew, that there were not sufficient parking spaces. I drove by this location after I spoke with her about it, and she took pictures of it, which, these are all on different days, Monday through Saturday, showing the businesses that are there who will be her neighbors. One is a little fast food place that has, I believe, six tables and two chairs to each table, people basic, it's a deli, so people basically go in there, order their sandwiches, and leave. Very few people stay there and eat. The next one is a dry cleaners, again, people go in, pick up their cleaning, they leave. The next one is a check cashing place, I believe. We know people don't wanna stay in there very long, 'cause they don't want their neighbors to see them there. The next one would be her, which is a beauty shop. It's five hundred and thirty-seven square feet. I mean, how many parking spaces do you need? How many people can you accommodate in a five hundred and thirty-seven square foot beauty salon? This is something that is an American dream, which in today's economy is almost gone by the wayside. So, when I heard this story, because my husband and I are small business owners as well, and we've been before you many times, she was afraid to come up here, and my words to her was, I had people come up here and help me when we had to- And my words to her was, "I had people come up here and help me when we had to go through this process, so I want to pay back." And that's why I'm representing her today, one small business owner to another one. And I'm hoping that you find it in your heart to waive the parking standards because 11 parking spaces are the difference between the American dream and not having it. So we're here today asking for her to get that waiver.
Thank you. Were you finished?
Quite done.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anybody like to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Could you please allow...
Sure.
One microphone?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, pictures speak a thousand words, and I see a whole lot of empty lot there. Were these taken at different times in the day in that?
Yes, it is. They were taken various hours of the day, different times, Fridays, Saturdays, Mondays, Tuesdays. As you can see, there's not much parking going on, or business for that matter. It's a very slow center. And why she even wants to be here, God bless her, I'm happy that someone is. But it's her dream and her daughter's dream, and I'm hoping that you will allow her to have that.
Thank you. Maybe all her clients are coming on the Route 104 down Valley View by the bus.
Maybe she'll get some new ones after this.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Dindorfer, and I actually work for the owner of this property. I'm their commercial property manager. I work for Gatski Commercial, 4755 Dean Martin Drive. And I'm actually here in support of the applicant. I brought in some pictures. This is actually a small commercial property that is surrounded by a lot of senior apartment homes, apartment communities. So a lot of the business of that particular center is walk-up. People are walking, they maybe don't have cars, or things like that. So I did also bring some pictures, although I think what I can see here, I don't think I've ever seen more than five cars at the center at any given time. So it is mostly and primarily walk-up. And that little restaurant the nice lady was referring to is actually, it's kind of a corner store and deli, and that's places where many of the seniors located close to that center walk over and get canned goods or things like that. So they're in and out fairly quickly. So I'm actually here in support. Blanca will do a good service to the community, to the supporting apartment community, several of them around that area. And I just was...I wanted to let you know that the landlord and we're on board with her being very successful with that location.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak for or against this item? Please come forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board?
Commissioner?
Commissioner Quinn?
I think it's so nice of you for coming out to speak for this young business owner. I visited the property twice this week at two different times. One time I counted two cars, the other time I counted one car. And I believe with my whole heart that you standing here today is only going to benefit that corner and increase the opportunity for you and for the people around it to walk there and get their hair done. And that's what I'm hoping. So I'm in full support of you, and I wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you.
Is that a motion, Commissioner Quinn?
That will be a motion for approval of the variance for the parking of 29873, number 37.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 37. Please cast your votes. And that motion has passed.
And that goes forward to council on November 19th.
Mr. Evans?
For anyone who doesn't know, Veronica Holmes-Libick and her husband David are the creators of the Gypsy Caravan and all the little art and antique shops along Colorado. And I believe we're opening an antique mall down the street as well. But they have put their life's passion into making that area what it is today, and the city really owes them a debt of gratitude as well. And I thank you for coming out and speaking on behalf of this business owner as well.
Thank you. Well, I told her you guys were really nice.
Thank you very much.
So we'll all come over for haircuts one night. Well, I'll take some dreadlocks then. How's that, Blanca? Thank you. Item 38 and 39 are related items. Item 38 is VAR 30312, applicant owner Las Vegas Venture LLC and Southern Trace Holdings LLC to allow a 15-foot front yard setback where 20 feet is required adjacent to the west side of Effinger Lane, approximately 300 feet south of Harris Avenue. Item 39, SDR 29912, major amendment to an approved site development plan review to include three additional units on an approved 99-unit expansion to an existing 110-unit senior apartment development. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed major modification of the previous site development plan review will further the city's goal of allowing for the development of senior housing projects. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the major modification. Furthermore, staff is recommending approval of the variance as the portion of the building that will be located within the setback area is a required fire exit stairwell by code. Staff would also like to amend condition number three of the site development plan review as submitted to the clerk to read as follows. All developments shall be in conformance with the site plan, landscape plan, and building elevations date stamped 9/24/08, except as amended by conditions herein. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant?
George DeCakus, 2655 South Rainbow, Las Vegas. We concur with staff's recommendations. Respectfully wish your support on this.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody like to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no...
Mr. Evans?
Comment, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please do.
I think the applicant has made a good presentation, and the city is recommending approval, and I think there's good reason for that. So my motion would be to follow the recommendation of the staff for approval of agenda item number 38, and the amendments are those on the site development review?
That is correct.
Okay, so my motion would be for approval of agenda item number 38.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 38. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed. Item 39?
And 39, once again, the staff's recommending approval. Good cause has been provided. My motion would be for approval with all the, if approved, conditions as well as those amended by the staff.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 39. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
It goes forward to council November 19th.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Item 40, RQR 29722, applicant owner Constantino Novel Nevada LLC required five-year review of an approved special use permit for a 74-foot-tall 14-by-48 off-premise sign billboard at 73 South Martin Luther King Boulevard. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the billboard lacks a final inspection on the building permit, and staff recommends denial. Please note additional comments have been received.
Applicant?
Good evening, Rod Carter, 2880 Mead Avenue.
This is the right billboard?
Yes, sir, it is. Thank you. On behalf of Constantino Novel and Clear Channel Outdoor, submitted into the Building Department today, a letter from a certified engineer, and we respectfully ask for your approval moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have that letter?
We've seen the letter, but we do not have it as those are submitted to the Department of Building and Safety for their review. And I know they received it today, but they have not had an opportunity to review it.
This is a public hearing. Anybody for or against this item, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I think that the approvals should be contingent upon the building and safety's okay on this, number one. Second thing, I think the commission really needs to make this clear, that these billboards have to be kept up and neat all the time. This is a five-year review. We don't want this thing to be okay today, goes through another four and a half years of misery, and then they come back again. I mean, somehow, they've got to make this clear, that they've got to keep these things nice.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions? I have a question for staff. If it's...the letter's going through Building and Safety, they're going to give a yes or no on it, and then it's going to come to you guys, correct?
No, actually, that does not come to the planning department for the final inspection. What it does is the Building and Safety Department reviews the letter from the third-party engineer to ensure that it's structurally sound, and it makes a determination from there. If they deny it, then the billboard would, of course, have either be somehow new code or it gets torn down, I suppose.
Or is it proper for us to act on it tonight, and we don't... Subject two?
Actually, condition number two covers that, that requires that within 30 days of approval that they receive their final.
Thank you.
Commissioner, just so you know, just part of it, to help any kind of clarifications, why this was kind of, for lack of better terms, was sprung on Clear Channel kind of at the last minute. The only reason why I say that is back in 2006, and for the next billboard coming, 2004, at city council, the condition was deleted, that it needed to comply with that. We were under the impression that, moving forward, that this was no longer an issue that it was taken care of. In talking with Mr. Rankin and officials, once this was put together, coming before you with the recommendation for denial, I had an engineer from Phoenix out here in Daze, spent $12,000 on three letters to get this moving forward in good faith, so you know.
Thank you. Commissioner...Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
No other discussion. I'm ready for a motion.
Please do.
Okay, in regards to...where'd it go?
Item 40.
In regards to item number 40, required review 29722, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 40. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Matter goes forward to council on November 19th.
Thank you. Item 41, RQR 29832, applicant owner Clear Channel Outdoor, owner Mecelhose Trust, request for a two-year required review on an approved special use permit for a 40-foot-tall 14-by-48-foot off-premise billboard sign at 1535 Northeastern. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, this billboard also lacks a building permit or any final inspection, and as such, staff is recommending denial. Please note additional comments have been received.
Thank you.
Rod Carter, 2880 Mead Avenue, on behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor. Again, same comments as stated before on the previous agenda item. Got the letter from certified engineer. Conditions were the same as the deleted condition. We're trying to respond to it and would appreciate the approval going forward.
Thank you. Still the public hearing. Anybody like to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
No discussions. Before I make the motion, I'll point out that condition number two does require the construction inspection. So based upon that, in regards to item number 41, RQR 29832, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 41. Please cast your vote.
Mr. Chairman, one comment real quick.
Vice Chairman, this...
This billboard overhangs an existing building, which is a condition that we no longer typically support or approve. So I mean, my concern is, we've seen these in the past where buildings, ones of Vernon, and you know, the billboard's sitting there. I mean, there's been several of those. So in that regard, I mean, I'm not really opposed to the billboard, but I'm opposed to the one hanging over the building like this, and so I will not support this.
Thank you. Motion on the floor for approval of item 41. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Thank you.
Goes forward to city council on November 19th.
Item 42, RQR 29939, applicant owner Olga Hantagova, request, require two-year review on an approved special use permit for the keeping of exotic animals, a lion, tiger, and leopards, at 225 Montessori Street. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, if...
Is the applicant present? Is there an applicant present on this item?
Mr. Chairman...
Read it in, Mr. Rankin.
Mr. Chairman, staff conducted a field check and also contacted the owner and the Las Vegas Animal Control Supervisor to confirm that the exotic animals are no longer being kept at site, and therefore recommends denial of the RQR, and as the use has appeared to have ceased.
Okay. Seeing no applicant, I guess we could hear this or hold it?
No.
Commissioner Quinn?
For the record, I went out there myself. It is...I was there Tuesday at 1:30, and the home is abandoned. The property is terrible. There's no reason to hold this item. We need to deny it and shut it down. So my motion is to deny it.
And just to...it's my understanding, just from what little I know, is that the animals are no longer there.
They're not.
And that is the understanding.
Very likely that the required review for the action is not necessary, and that the animals have been moved, and we're assuming that the use is no longer there. So it's just a requirement, and I think our vote is simply just memorializes that and clears it up.
Yes, whatever. Clear it up.
So what is the motion to clear something up?
Say again?
Are there no animals there? Are we just going to let them go?
Mr. Quinn, you didn't see a lion, leopard, or tiger while you were there, did you?
No. I didn't trespass. I just went to the front door. But I guarantee you, if there was anything living there, it was a lizard. So my motion is for denial of RQR 29939.
There is a motion on the floor for denial. Before we vote on that, let me do a matter of protocol. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody like to speak for or against this item? Please come forward. Thank you.
My name is Dana Little, 2270 Montessori Street. I'm on speaking on behalf of myself, my husband Wayne Little, and my parents Brendan and Cheryl Klein. I don't believe the property is abandoned. There's actually people still living there. It's a big home, though, but there's cars that come and go, and as far as I know, people are still in residence there. They forgot to attend one meeting, and I'm not sure why they're not here tonight. But I was here and prepared to voice my support. I have two small children, I have pets, and there's never been any issue. They've had this property since before the neighborhood was ever generated.
When was the last time there were animals there? Because I really looked in the back, you know, in the back circle.
It's been probably three to six months.
Really?
I can't say for sure, but I know there were cars pulling in and out last week.
So is it your suggestion that the motion then be that the place be rechecked if animals ever show up, because it is not suited right now for animals?
Right. No, I would...I don't know that I'd table it for good.
I just want to make the motion for denial at this time.
Are you the neighbor that enjoys the low roar of the lions?
No.
Okay.
No, there's many of us, though, and we all kind of like them, as far as...
Okay.
But that...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Quinn, or if anybody else would like to make any comments, there is a motion on the floor to follow staff recommendation for denial offered by Commissioner Quinn. Seeing none, we'll vote on that motion. The yes vote is for the denial. Please cast your vote. And that motion for denial has passed.
That is final action, and the applicant said an appeal within 10 days to the office of the secret.
Item 43, SUP 29743, applicant Money Tree Inc., owner Shadow Hills Plaza LLC, for a financial institution specified with waivers to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a residential parcel where 200 feet is required, and 690 feet from a financial institution specified where 1,000 feet is required at 10420 West Cheyenne Avenue, Suite 120. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed financial institute specified fails to meet the minimum distance requirements set forth by Title 19.04. Therefore, staff has recommended denial of this application. Please note that additional letters of protest have been received. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening. Jennifer Roberts, 300 South 4th Street of Lionel Sawyer &amp; Collins. I'm here with Trevor Hayes of Lionel Sawyer &amp; Collins as well. We represent Money Tree, who is the applicant for you today. This is actually, in September 2007, Money Tree received a special use permit with similar waivers of the distance restrictions. And the reason we appear before you today is because after that approval was obtained, they found that there was a better location within the shopping plaza that they're going to be located that better suits their needs. And I'll point out on the map, the previous location was here. This is the 215 right here. This was the previously approved location, Cheyenne Avenue being right here. The new location is with, kind of deeper within the center. This is a Walmart store right here, Wells Fargo Bank. This is a Walmart store right here, Wells Fargo Bank. Although, the reason it does not meet the distance restrictions to, the distance requirements to residential is because the property line is the entire parcel. There's some residential over here, but it's well over the actual distance that would be required if it were measured, not property line to property line, if the property line were in this area. And the nearest similar use is across the two-fifteen, and, yeah, so it's not near the area.
Thank you very much.
And in fact, we would offer that we would be willing to expunge the previous special use permit if, as a condition, just so that it doesn't interfere with this current one if approved.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? I just, that was my question, if, while they're still here. Just if I can clarify the matter. You had a previous approval for the financial institution specified-
Correct.
-within the same shopping center. You're moving to a different location within the same shopping center.
Correct.
You already have the approval for the other pad or the other site.
Right.
You want to go to the new one and expunge the old.
Yes, we were advised that because of the change of address, it did require a new special use permit, but yes, that is correct.
If I may, what is that other entitlement?
Yes, I have it right here.
Special use permit, two-two-seven-zero-three.
Yes.
And it has never been exercised.
Correct.
Is it still valid?
It is still valid. It has not expired yet.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody like to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? Not, we'll entertain a motion on item forty-three.
Before he does it.
Commissioner Steinman?
Sun City Summerlin is in the notice area. I serve on that board. I live two miles at least from here, so I'm going to vote on this.
And your loan's approved.
In regards to item number forty-three, special use permit, twenty-nine seven forty-three, I'd make a motion for approval, subject to all staff conditions, with the addition of a condition where the special use permit, twenty-two seven oh-three, is expunged with the intent being to eliminate any potential saturation of this type business in the area.
That motion has been offered. We will get some more clarification from Director Wheeler.
Chairman, if I may, ask the city attorney, how exactly would be the best way to form that language?
You know, if we're talking about the words specifically, we wouldn't, they might expunge the permit, we might extinguish the permit. Maybe the, maybe the language would be, the applicant shall submit a letter to the city Department of Planning and Development indicating that special use permit, whatever it is-
Two-two-seven-oh-three.
Two-two-seven-oh-three is being voluntarily relinquished by the applicant. And you could make a condition of approval that, that in fact, this action extinguishes SUP two-two-seven-oh-three. So you have your choice, but I like, I like getting something from the applicant in writing, actually voluntarily withdrawing, or extinguishing, or expunging, whatever word they want to use, that prior SUP.
Can we do both?
You can do both.
And then prior to issuance of the business license-
Certainly.
-for this subject's permit.
Yep.
Okay.
I can submit a letter, no problem.
That would be a motion added on to Vice Chairman Trowbridge's request.
In lieu of, actually, I think that that was exactly what I intended to say, word for word.
I thought they were reading your mind. Motion on the floor for approval with amended and added conditions, please cast your vote. And that has passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Goes forward to council on November nineteenth.
So, Chairman, real quick, just for the record, the way this works is that Money Tree will submit the letter to extinguish the prior SUP before any business license is issued?
Yes.
Okay.
Item forty-four, SUP two-nine eight-five-three, applicant Pond Plus LLC, owner SDL Inc., major amendment to an approved special use permit with waivers to allow a zero-foot distance separation where two-hundred feet is required from a residential parcel and four-hundred-and-forty-four-foot distance separation where a one-thousand feet is required from a financial institution for a one-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-six-square-foot expansion of an existing three-thousand-nine-hundred-square-foot pawn shop at one-two-three-seven East Sahara Avenue. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed expansion of the pawn shop into an adjoining suite will have a negligible effect on the surrounding area, as the use has been in existence at this location since two thousand. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this major modification of the special use permit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Applicant?
Marin Perry with Ballard Spa, one hundred City Parkway, Suite seventeen fifty, representing the applicant. You all have said it so well, unless you have any questions of me or Mr. McCall, who's here as the owner of the business. We're just expanding some storage, and we'd appreciate you following staff and voting to support.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody like to speak for or against this item? Mr. Farlow?
Just one thing. If you notice that I've been real quiet about these pawn shops and stuff, it's because of the misery that the banks have brought upon this country, it makes the pawn shops look like angels.
I've always thought Craig was an angel, so-
And your loan's approved, too. Seeing, anybody else? We'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board?
Just a matter of disclosure, I met, along with Commissioner Quinn, with Ms. Perry, and she represented essentially the exact same thing in my office as she has this evening. As I understand it, this is simply an expansion of an existing use, and the staff is recommending approval.
Right.
That is correct. Motion, please, on item forty-four.
Regards to item number forty-four, special use permit, twenty-nine eight fifty-three, I'd make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item forty-four, please cast your vote. And that has passed.
Goes forward to council on November nineteenth.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Item forty-five, SUP two-nine eight-six-seven, applicant Young Sup Kim, owner American Pacific Capital LLC, for a beer/wine cooler on-sale establishment within an existing restaurant with a waiver to allow one-hundred-foot distance separation to a city park where four-hundred feet is required at seven-three-three-one West Lake Mead Boulevard, Suite one-oh-five. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, staff is unable to support the requested waiver and therefore recommends denial. Please note additional protests and support letters have been received.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening. My name is James U. two-five-six-zero, Montessori Street, on behalf of an applicant who's asking for permission to serve beer and wine along with the meals at his existing restaurant.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Does anybody like to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board?
Seeing none, I'm running a motion. This is my, one of my neighborhood restaurants. The sale of alcohol is incidental to the restaurant that's there. So in regards to item number forty-five, special use permit, twenty-nine eight sixty-seven, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item forty-five, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Thank you very much.
Goes forward to council on November nineteenth.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Item forty-six and forty-seven are related items. Item forty-six, SUP three-zero-two-five-seven, applicant owner WMC Two Associates LLC and WMC Five Phase Three LLC, for a proposed three-hundred-and-one-foot-high building within an A Airport Overlay District where the height limitation is one-hundred-and-seventy-five feet for a proposed commercial building adjacent to the southwest corner of Grand Central Parkway and Discovery Drive. Item forty-seven, SDR two-nine-eight-seven-zero, major amendment to an approved site development plan review for an eighteen-story, one-million-one-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-five-square-foot commercial building, an additional building height with a waiver of the downtown Centennial Plan Build-to-Line standard to allow a two-hundred-and-sixty-three-foot front setback. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed major modification of the previous approved site development plan review for Phase Four, the World Market Center, will result in a fifty-three percent reduction in building floor area, an increase of building height of twenty-six feet, as well as an increase of two additional parking garage levels. Staff finds that the request waivers is acceptable as future phases of the development will result in buildings being located close to the Build Two line. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the site development plan review and the associated special use permit. Furthermore, staff would like to amend condition number three of the site development plan review as submitted to the clerk to read as follows. All developments shall be in conformance with the site plan date stamped ten-eight-oh-eight and building elevation date stamped nine-nine of oh-eight, except as amended by conditions herein. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant?
James Denofrio, representing World Market Center. We agree with all the conditions of staff and would appreciate your support in approving this motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience speak for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Motion on, or comments on item forty-six or forty-seven?
Comment.
Commissioner Steinman?
Could you be kind enough to give us a little update on this project that's in our downtown? And obviously, is this something you're going to build start next year? Or what is your plan relative to this next building? And how are you doing? And the other buildings obviously must be doing okay if you're, if you're thinking along the way of another one. I just, it's good to get an update on what you're doing over there.
Well, the proposal is to build another two buildings on to the existing building three that we have right now. Building four, the plans are complete and we're ready to submit, but we are holding on to those plans until the economy gets a little bit better. But we definitely plan on moving forward with the next two buildings and building all the way out to Discovery Drive, that would be the phases four and five.
How many phases? If all this is built that you have here in this plan, how many phases are left beyond that, do you know?
Well, we had planned on building across Discovery as well, on the forty acres there, and there are three buildings slated for that as well, so that we would have twelve million square feet total.
Twelve million. So this will put us, puts you above six million?
Oh, we're, we'll be above six million with the next building.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll make a motion if you-
Please do.
Item number forty-six, which is SUP three-oh-two-five-seven, a move for approval, subject to condition.
Motion on the floor for approval of item forty-six, please cast your vote. And that motion has been approved. Item forty-seven?
Item forty-seven, which is SDR two-nine-eight-seven-oh, a move for approval, subject to conditions, and the amendment read into the record by staff on number three.
Motion on the floor for approval of item forty-seven, please cast your vote.
Commissioner Evans, please.
And that motion has passed.
Both items go forward November nineteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to citizens' participation, before we do that, we just want to, again, Commissioner Ellsworth, you okay down there? It's one down, and we don't know how many more to go.
Yes, sir, I made it through. Thank you.
Very good. It is a pleasure to have you on board as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Moving on to citizens' participation, citizen participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. Commissioner Ellsworth, welcome aboard.
Thank you. It was a pleasure getting to hear your voice today.
When I asked for the elevation difference on Hunt Ridge Center, Commissioner Dunham would have had it in a second, because he has a little computer there. Well, welcome aboard. I expect the same out of you now. The second thing, the second item is on the neon in Town Center. Town Center is so different from what was actually originally proposed way back in the first of the days, that it bears no resemblance at all. And why in the world they would be denying neon, because this is Las Vegas, is absolutely beyond me. The third and last thing is, in the view paper that came out today, Chairman Goins had some, some comments in that, and it brought up citizen participation in, in the, in the city's events. And we have two young people back here that are wanting to be architects someday, and I told them, well, this is where the rubber meets the road. So I'd like to introduce Amy and David back there.
How are you, Amy and David? Very good. Thank you. That concludes our citizens' participation. This meeting is adjourned.